Second, 2022, and we are gathered for the monthly voting. County Mayor in commission, and we are going to begin with a roll call, so I'm going to ask Clerk Spratlin to provide that for us.
Davenport, Parker.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Wright, Denson.
Here.
Poole.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Hamby.
Here.
We have a poll.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes of meetings of Tuesday, June 7th, Tuesday, June 14th, Tuesday, July 5th, and Tuesday, July 19th. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Some move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Myers and a second from Commissioner Link for approval of those minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Madam Clerk, are there any written communications this evening?
No, we have nothing on.
All right, I do have one award presentation, so I'm going to come down below. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, tonight, I am pleased that we have an award presentation to our very own DeeDee Dunphy from our Arts Division. So DeeDee, if you would come forward, I appreciate that a great deal. Glad to have you here. Thanks for making the long journey over from the Linden House. So we would very much like this evening for everybody to recognize a member of our award-winning, we just Services Department, and so DeeDee has joined me. Earlier this year, Governor Brian Kemp and First Lady Marty Kemp announced the 10th Annual Governors Awards for the Arts and Humanities to honor outstanding individuals and organizations that have made significant contributions to Georgia through their work in these fields. The awards are presented in partnership with the Georgia Council for the Arts and Georgia Humanities. So congratulations, DeeDee. You've won this following a competitive nominations process where 10 members of the Arts and Humanities Communities from across Georgia were awarded honors for this year. The recipients represented a diverse group of individuals and organizations that have contributed to and supported the growth of Georgia's thriving creative industries through community involvement, pioneering programs, and long-term financial commitment. And I will say, as a longtime appreciator of the work that DeeDee's done, both in the private and public sector, all of that applies to you. So congratulations to DeeDee. Everybody, please give her a round of applause.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I know, everybody sees the smile. I know they do.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for that. All right, we, my friends, are going to have several opportunities this evening for resident input, and terms of resident input are fairly consistent through the evening. When it is time for you to begin speaking, you're going to see the light in front of Clerk Spratlin turn green. When you have 30 seconds remaining, that light will turn yellow, and, lo and behold, when your time is up, that light will turn red. There are going to be opportunities on the consent agenda here in just a moment, an opportunity in just a little bit on old and new business, and then separate opportunities on each of the planning and zoning items. Rules for planning and zoning are slightly different, and I'll describe those when the time comes for that. And then at the conclusion of our voting sessions, like tonight, there's an opportunity for input on any item that is not on our agenda at all that is of interest to you as members of the public. So, that being said, would anyone like to speak to any of our consent agenda items? And those are items 1 through 9 this evening. 1 through 9. Going once, going twice. All right, I'd like to come behind the rail to ask commissioners, would any member of the commission like to remove any item from the consent agenda before we take a vote on those? Commissioner Parker?
Can I remove item number 6, please?
6. Any other items? All right, would everyone then go ahead and refer to items 1 through 5 and 7 through 9? And Attorney Drake, are there any ordinances to read regarding these items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item number 1 has an ordinance related to Lake Mealer. An ordinance to amend the FY 2021 annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as survived funding for the Lake Mealer homeowner, Lake Mealer HOA, for expenses related to purchasing materials for sidewalk installation and for other purposes.
All right, thank you for that, Attorney Drake. Do I hear a motion from the body for approval of items 1 through 5 and 7 through 9, then?
Some move.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Link. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're going to now move on to old and new business, and so that is item 6 and items 10 through 27 and 37. Again, 6 and items 10 through 27 and 37. And if you would, please make sure you fill out your name card and hand that to Attorney Drake when you come up to the podium, so that way we can get your name correct for the record. So anyone who would like to speak to those items on old and new business? Again, that is item 6, 10 through 27, and item 37. Good evening, just provide us with your name and let us know which item you're speaking to.
Yes, my name is Alan Jones, 195 Xavier Drive, and I'm actually speaking on a number of items, including one you just approved. I want to thank you for approving the Vision 01 unanimously, and that seems to get kicked down the curb quite a bit from sploß to t-sploß, and I'm just glad it's moving forward. Also, I speak item number 12, the clean and renewable item. Y'all have worked long and hard on this. I look forward to its passing. Item 13, Prince Avenue, area residents have been asking for this forever. I'm not sure it needs a trial. I'm not really sure the point of doing it from Pulaski to Barber doesn't seem to be worth it unless it eventually goes to Millage, because that's the end goal there. You get more riders with the longer length, and I think a shorter time period is great. I like the CDO. Marijuana, I'm not a smoker, so I have no skin in the game in this, but arresting someone for a small amount of pot is a waste of taxpayer money and targets already marginalized communities. I realize that to some, everything is a slippery slope to something else. Pot is a slope to, I don't know, heroin addiction. Alcohol is a slope to homelessness. Chocolate is a slope to being on My 600 Pound Life. Letting kids know that some people are gay or that black people have been historically treated unfairly is a slope to the downfall of society. Thanks for not buying into that, and thanks for not adding taking a class to the process. Those really don't work. The dollar fine seems a little absurd. Either have a small fine, like 50 bucks, or don't have anything, but if you're required to have something, I'd go with the 50 bucks, but since it's not on the table, just vote yes. Reproductive freedom, most people have a strong opinion on this, myself included. I prefer to let the women decide. I think it would be great if female commissioners all got to vote first, and mayors just, and the males just got to say, I do or do not support this, but I'll defer to the women on the commission and abstain. Seems like there's at least eight of you that are going to pass this anyway, so thank you for that. West Hancock, I know this is later in the talk, but UGA Housing has mercilessly encroached on our central city. If a frat is eight beds short for the coming year, maybe they should have taken in eight less pledges to indoctrinate. Quality of life for your constituents should matter most. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, step right up. Again, 3 minutes, you may begin speaking. Let us know what you're here for.
Hey, I'm here to speak on the Cannabis Decrim Ordinance.
And your name for the record.
My name is Zane. I reside at 136 Conifer Court in Winterville. I've been a member of the Athens community for about a decade and have spent a similar amount of time immersed in drug policy reform. After getting my bachelor's, I spent my life living in a bubble. I lived here and worked remotely in the cannabis industry for five years on a near-daily basis, interacting with C-suite executives for companies worth tens of millions of dollars. Mayor Gertz, last May, you and I had a one-on-one discussion about ACC's support for companies applying for a medical cannabis license here in Georgia to manufacture what the federal law still considers a schedule-on-drug. And so if we do not support this ordinance, what does this say to our community? That we're willing to allow a company to come in and profit off of a plant that we still incarcerate people over? I strongly support the inclusion of the provision that says that violation of the ordinance does not constitute probable cause, because there is no reason that we need to create more problems just because someone is possessing this plant that is making people tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, all over the country. Passing this bill will not only shield our citizens from unnecessary legal consequences, but it'll also send a message to the Athens community, to state officials, and to the broader public that Athens listens to the will of its people, follows the data, and makes sensible decisions. Please vote yes on this ordinance.
Thank you, Zane. Come on down, let us know your name and item you're speaking to.
Good evening, my name is Addison Clapp. I'm an Athens-based organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I want to speak in favor of Agenda Items 20 and 22, the Agenda Item to decriminalize possession of small amounts of marijuana, and the Ordinance for decriminalizing abortion access. A recent AJC poll last month found that 55% of Georgia voters disagree with the new law that bans abortions after six weeks. Even some self-identified conservatives oppose this law. A six-week abortion ban, in that sense, cannot be called a democratic decision. This ban puts the health and safety of Athens-Clark County residents at risk, primarily poor communities. The vast majority of Georgia voters also say that marijuana should be not just decriminalized but legalized. The war on drugs has only ever been an excuse to police black, brown, and other oppressed peoples. These resolutions are certainly not the final solution, but we have to use all of our tools at our disposal to fight back. It is a shame that public funds could ever be used to prosecute people seeking abortions, or as an excuse to police people who are in already oppressed communities. It is a shame that public funds are used this way while our unhoused neighbors sleep without shelter. It is a shame that public funds could be used this way while the Athens uninsured pay hundreds of dollars to get tested for COVID-19. It is a shame that public funds could be used this way while Athens-Clark County schools remain underfunded. And it is a shame that public funds could be used this way while people who actually want to have children can't afford it due to their poverty. People who want abortions and people who want children should both be able to have the economic means to do those things. That is the meaning of self-determination. The PSL urges the Athens-Clark County Commission to pass both of these resolutions. We stand in full solidarity with all those who are seeking abortions and with all victims of racist mass incarceration, and we will continue to organize to fight back against these ills. Thank you.
Thank you, Addison. Good evening, just let us know your name and item you're speaking to.
My name is Linda Krotke, and I'm going to address item number 12, the Accept the Clean and Renewable Energy Plan. The resolution states, "The overwhelming scientific evidence is that climate change is upon us, and the continued use of fossil fuels is contributing to extreme natural disasters." Actually, not all scientific evidence backs that statement. There are schools of thought and further discussion is needed. Many believe that science proves climate is cyclical. The earth goes into periods of warming and periods of cooling. We're in a period of warming now, but I can remember when climate activists, I'm not old, were screaming that we're headed into the next ice age. Either way, climate change is not an emergency, as you would like us to believe. Change should be natural and necessary and not driven by hysteria. Climate change is not an emergency. The resolution states, "The switch to clean energy sources will reduce air, water, and land pollution and the associated impacts on public health." While currently in California, there are stacks upon stacks of solar panels that are no longer useful. They have lived their expected life of 25 to 35 years, and now there is legitimate concern about the disposal of these panels and their toxicity levels. Toxic substances are produced and used in the manufacturing of silicon for panels. Additionally, the smart meters and inverters in the panels are responsible for radiation emissions and dirty electricity. Solar panels are not as green as you think they are. Electric vehicle batteries use thousands of cells with components sourced from around the world, silver, nickel, lithium, and others. They must be mined, not very earth-friendly, and China supplies nearly all the lithium. That means China will have control over our batteries just as they have control over our solar panels. Just as with solar panels, when the EV batteries come to the end of their life, their green benefits go away. If they end up in a landfill, its cells can release toxins, including heavy metals, and recycling batteries, as dangerous as toxic fumes, can be released. Today's EV batteries are not designed to be recycled. Maybe one day they will be. The technology is not here right now. We need better recycling methods before we have more EV cars and buses. EVs are not as green as you think they are. The resolution states, "Relying on fossil fuels to generate the expected increase of energy demand is a direct contradiction to the goals laid out in the 100% clean and renewable resolution." I understand that to mean you agree with complete elimination of fossil fuels. How ridiculous. Gas powers EV charging stations. Gas runs our tractors and other farm equipment. We currently need fossil fuels. By your wanting to reevaluate the role of fossil fuels, playing the Athens-Clark County Employees Retirement Funds indicates you want to undermine the fossil fuel industry by not investing in them. That would be a crucial blow to our economy. I deeply believe in taking care of our planet. I recycle, reuse, and hand down. Alternative energy sources are most certainly a part of our future, but to force change when we're not ready for it will cause chaos and destruction. Technology is not ready for the elimination of fossil fuels, nor is it ready for an abundance of waste created by solar panels and EV batteries. Though I know each of your decisions is already formed, I'll urge you to slow down in your plans and reevaluate often.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
My name is Alan Hart, and I am speaking to item number 20, the decriminalization of cannabis. I want to say that it seems like we're all providing perspective here, and what I would like to do is provide three perspectives, partly because I am a business owner in the cannabis industry. I own Franny's Pharmacy locally, which is on Broad Street. We sell hemp products, and we provide cannabis to people who need them. I'm also a user of those products, as I have high anxieties and depression that I fight daily. I am also an expert witness that has been brought before the Clark County Courts and testified in four cases here in Athens to the odor of cannabis being either hemp or marijuana, which is a misnomer, because it is the same odor regardless and should never be used as probable cause any longer. I know several retired and active law enforcement agents who currently admit that they do not use probable cause when the smell of marijuana is present. However, we need to codify that a little bit further. I think it's important to know that the smell of cannabis is not only beneficial to all of us, because it's a smell called terpenes, something that's present in all plants, and admitted to help keep those plants healthy, but they also keep us healthy. There is nothing about the odor of cannabis that is off-putting other than your grandmother not enjoying it very much and maybe slapping you on the hand after you. She experiences it. On the other hand, I must tell you also that the plant has been given to us by evolution and creation and whatever else you want, to recognize as a creation. It is mentioned in the Bible no less than five times. Cannabis is part of our bodies. We have what's called an endocannabinoid system that's now recognized by more than 11% of all medical colleges in the United States. Most of the research in cannabis has been done overseas, mostly in Israel. It has been funded by the National Institute of Health of the United States. Furthermore, what people should also know is that cannabis is very important to many people. People with high anxieties who, higher levels of high anxiety people reside in low-income parts of our society, not just Athens-Clark County, but all human society, because people with anxieties have a harder time struggling to live a normal life and to get by and understand how to deal with the regular pressures of everyday life. So it's important to have cannabis available to all people at all times. It is not toxic. There is no overdose level. There is no habit forming. It is not addictive. It is much safer even than the coffee you drink in the morning. It can also provide the same stimulation that coffee provides while also lowering your blood pressure. It has many, many, many benefits that don't stop there. I would urge anybody to look up any of the information that I have provided so far.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Time is up, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners.
Good evening, let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hunter Knight. I reside at 2772 Springfield Court. While I'm not a resident of Athens-Clark County, I'm no stranger to this building or these meetings. It's been a long time running with my colleagues at SSDP, UGA. It feels like yesterday I was just in here. As Alan was saying earlier, perspective is a very important thing when it comes to this matter for the decriminalization of cannabis possession. So let me tell you guys about how I got arrested in April of 2021, quite recent. I was arrested for 0.3 grams of THC oil in Gwinnett County, the same type of oil that's legal about 500 miles away from this exact location, medically, of course, which I do qualify for. I had to fundraise $4,000 just to afford a lawyer, thanks to my colleagues at SSDP. Don't know where I'd be without them in this matter. And after waiting nearly a year, I was put on three years of felony probation with a $2,000 fine, also a little sprinkle of $34 a month in probation fees for that. I'm a student, a hard worker, and most importantly, a caregiver to my mom. I am for sure not a criminal. When I first met my probation officer, I was informed that I couldn't bring any children into the building. I don't have any kids. I got a nephew and stuff like that. But I asked, why can't I bring kids in a probation building? What if I'm babysitting or something like that? Well, that's because I'm in the same building as sex offenders and pedophiles, simply for possessing a small amount of THC oil that's illegal in just about the greater area of the United States. Now, it's crazy when you think about it. Because I was being processed in the same building as pedophiles and sex offenders, that's commodified across the nation, it really made me think, what are we doing in Georgia when it comes to prosecuting people for this plant? I do think Athens is taking a very great step in this ordinance, and I'd like to see this same ordinance be codified statewide. And thank you to everyone who's been supporting this ordinance so far. And for those who are still a little shaky on the issue, just imagine your son, who is a hard-working student with a 3.6 GPA, who just wants to, you know, have a little party time, wean off of some stress and whatnot, getting arrested and in the books as a criminal. I've lost my Second Amendment rights and my Fourth Amendment rights, something that I think is very, very important to all of us today. My biggest fear, honestly, is that me riding in the car with my mom with dementia, with dementia, pardon me, and getting pulled over, having to go through the roundabout of me being on probation when she can barely even walk on her own. That is the biggest fear of mine, and it's all because I had a little bit of plant matter on me. So going forward, I would really like everyone to consider that, and I know you will all do the right thing. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thanks for coming down to visit with us, Hunter. Good evening, just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
My name is Savannah Downing. I live at 1395 Cedar Shoals Drive in Athens, Georgia. I'm here today to speak in favor of Items 20 and 22 on the topics of decriminalizing marijuana possession and abortion care for Athenians. First, I want to thank the Commission for bringing these important issues to a vote, because in similar ways, the criminalization of marijuana or abortion care affect us all negatively. Passing this would be a small step, but an important one, to show your constituents that you care about our lives and our livelihoods. Residents who are able to make personal decisions to improve their lives make for better, healthier communities. Voting in favor recognizes the right and ability of individuals to make their own decisions, because we, as individuals, are experts in our own lives. It also shows respect for those decisions, even if an individual would not make the same ones in their own case. And a vote in favor demonstrates trust in our community members to do what is best for them. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, quote, "The majority of people who use marijuana do not go on to use other, quote, 'harder substances.' In fact, our predispositions to addictive disorders can be found with any substance, such as the advertised and widely available nicotine and alcohol products. Further, marijuana is most frequently used for various forms of pain management. Its decriminalization in Athens would allow chronic or acute pain patients to better address issues of pain management, providing options beyond the well-documented negative effects of opiates also widely used and prescribed." The point in these comparisons is not to elevate or stigmatize one over the other, but to demonstrate that when we live in communities that respect individuals' abilities to make the best healthcare decisions for ourselves, we live quite simply in better communities. This ordinance would do the work of respecting Athens residents, and the issue of probable cause can also further extend this. Plain smell laws have been used to search vehicles and persons, and it's no surprise that black community members are three times more likely to be arrested for a substance that different races use without much difference in terms of statistical significance, according to a 2020 report from the ACLU. That means that already marginalized community members are at greater risk of arrest and prosecution. Put plainly, marijuana criminalization is racist and has been from the start. Similarly, abortion criminalization disproportionately affects low-income communities and communities of color, and let's not forget that anyone with a miscarriage could be subject to investigation and potential prosecution under the Georgia Secu ban. Given that about a third of pregnancies, according to the Mayo Clinic, end in miscarriage, everyone in this room either knows or has known someone who's gone through this. But still, criminalizing a procedure that only some population members can even receive in the first place is, to put it plainly, sexist. No public money should be used whatsoever to investigate, charge, or prosecute the basic reproductive healthcare. No individual's moral stance should weigh in on that topic. I have endometriosis, underwent two surgeries this year. My outcome of whether or not I can even become pregnant is uncertain, but what I do know is certain that I want to live in communities that respect its members and choices that they make, especially when those choices are deeply personal and not a threat to others. I urge you to vote in support of Items 20 and 22 to demonstrate that you value and respect me and other Athenians. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Savannah. Appreciate it. All right, good evening, just let us know your name and the item that you'd like to speak with.
My name is Dustin Hayfley Chants. I reside at 304 Joanne Court here in Athens, and I am here to speak on Item 20. In 1994, Richard Nixon's domestic policy adviser, John Erlichman, said the following in an interview. He said, "We knew we couldn't make it illegal to be either against the war or to be black, but by getting the public to associate the hippies with marijuana and black people with heroin, and then criminalizing them both heavily, we could disrupt those communities. We could arrest their leaders, raid their homes, break up their meetings, and vilify them night after night in the evening news. Did we know we were lying about the drugs? Of course we did." The war on drugs was created to vilify and oppress people based on their views of the war at the time and the color of their skin. Fast forward to current day, the ACLU's report in 2020, titled "A Tale of Two Countries," makes it clear that the targeting of the war on drugs against black people specifically continues today. You are 3.64 times more likely to be arrested for marijuana possession if you are black than if you are white, despite the fact that there is no difference in the rate of marijuana usage. I know that the decriminalization measure isn't a magic bullet to fix this in our community. To do that, we would have to address much bigger problems, like how do we affix unequal application of the law in the courtroom, or how do we get rid of privatized prisons, and so many other things that I couldn't begin to detail here tonight. But it is a step in the right direction, and it can be an even bigger step in the right direction if we include an amendment to remove marijuana usage as probable cause for search and seizure. I hope that you vote tonight to pass the measure and the amendment, if possible, in the future, and that we can continue to try to make Athens a city that is good for everyone who lives here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Good evening, just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
My name is Felicia Smith, and I'm not actually a resident of Clark County. I live in Hull, Georgia, and good to see you all this evening. Okay, so I would like to talk about the resolution for number 22 and 20, and I'd like to talk to them in a different order. This is the word of Almighty God, the Creator of the universe, who put the stars and the sun and the trees and the beautiful, everything we see. He said, "Now, the word of the Lord came to me, saying, 'Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you, and I approved of you as my chosen instrument. And before you were born, I consecrated you to myself as my own.'" That's in the Book of Jeremiah. And then the book is Psalm 139, it says, "You were formed, but you formed me..." It says, "You were formed, but you formed me in most parts. You knit me together in my mother's womb, and I will give thanks and praise to you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made, and marvelous are your works, and that my soul knows very well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was being formed in a secret place, intricately and skillfully formed, as an embroidered with many colors in the depths of the earth. Your eyes have seen my unformed substance, and all of my days were written in your book before one of them was yet to be." My mother was gang raped by seven men in the 60s. My grandmother tried to beat me out of her stomach with a broom because it was not respectable to be pregnant. So I was a product of rape. So by all and most people's standards, I should have been aborted and pulled from my mother's womb and chopped in little pieces, or however else they decide to call abortion. I was never wanted from birth, but my mother fought for my life. And I went through many, many years of rejection and abandonment, and I shouldn't be standing here. I also have an adopted son. We adopted at three days old. I'm 54. My husband is 64. And I found out two years after we adopted him that he was a product of rape. And he's the most beautiful, amazing, sweet little boy you would ever see in your whole life. But on top of that, I was raised by another father, obviously, because we don't know who my biological father is. But the word of God says, "It's not by the will of man nor by the will of flesh that I've been born, but by the will of Almighty God that I was created in the womb." So even though my mother loved me and fought for me, it was God that placed me in her womb. And then the father who raised me was a doctor, but he thought it was okay to smoke marijuana, had it hidden up in the cabinets. And so my brother and I would snap little pieces of marijuana from that cabinet. And so after taking that marijuana out of that cabinet, it was a gateway drug. And it was marijuana that the THC level was 30. Today, the THC level is 100. It's laced with fentanyl. It's laced with all kinds of drugs that can kill this generation, which is what the enemy is after. He's after this generation. But God has a different plan. I was addicted. It opened the door. I went from marijuana to speed to meth to crack to heroin, and I almost tried to kill myself. And it is a miracle that I'm standing here in front of you today. I was addicted to drugs and alcohol for 23 years of my life.
Felicia, thank you for visiting with us. Thank you.
God bless you, and may you answer to a much higher authority. Bless all of you.
Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
My name's Nicole White, and I live at 655 Pine Forest Drive. I did my master's in ecology here, and I'm speaking in support of item number 12. I'm really proud to be in a city that is trying to push hard. I am a white woman with no background that precludes me any luxuries in this life. My parents have been here for generations, and I live in a near-conditioned home, and I don't have the luxury of speaking to whether it's too hot for people to exist in this town. There are more unhoused people in this town than other cities of similar sizes. And to be honest, I didn't even come to speak. I'm really a nervous public speaker. But I also wanted to speak in support of the marijuana ordinance and removing or including the, I'm sorry, including the part that precludes it from being used for search and seizure. And then also, as a woman who doesn't want kids, I don't feel like I should be forced to, or anyone, woman or birthing person, and that should be thought about by every person in this room.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Good evening. My name is Robin Grisulis. I live at 355 The Preserve Drive. I'm here to speak on subject matter number 20, the possession of marijuana local ordinance. I have called Athens my one and only home for the past four years. I am here today to share my story as my plea to demand that simple cannabis possession be decriminalized in Athens and ordinance 3225 be passed. I am speaking in favor that this ordinance be passed as one of many measures to reprieve the damage caused by the War on Drugs, which disproportionately caused immense damage to people of minority status and myself. When somebody is criminally charged for possession of cannabis, they are hit with expensive fines that are unattainable for a large amount of the public. Athens Clark County has a large percentage of citizens of lower income compared to most counties in Georgia. There are about over 250 counties in Georgia, and Athens Clark County has one of the highest percentages of low-income people. Cannabis is a plant. The fact that cannabis is categorized as a Schedule I substance, which means cannabis has no potential for medicinal benefit, is based off of lack of information. It's extremely outdated, and it's old news that needs to be changed since now we have data that cannabis can be used for things such as PTSD, anxiety, seizures, cancer, and other medicinal things. As a student of UGA, cannabis helps me greatly. I've used cannabis since I was a little kid in middle school, actually, and I am a scholarship recipient at UGA. Cannabis has personally helped me get the great grades that I get. It's helped me with my attendance in school. It's helped me with my PTSD and my hypervigilance. And I am currently facing tens of thousands of dollars for a criminal offense that ended in felonies that started with the probable cause that somebody smelled marijuana in my car, which was actually legal Delta 8. So the search and seizure, although they found other things in my car, it should have never happened because the illegal cannabis smells the exact same thing as the illegal hemp because it is the same. It's the same plant. It's the hemp plant. It's a God-given plant. It's not made in a lab or a basement. The fact that it is classified in the same category as synthetic drugs is wrong. I want to also talk really quick about something that affects me as a UGA student. UGA has a zero tolerance policy for drug crime offenses. This means that if cannabis is criminalized, a simple cannabis possession offense to a student is treated the same as hard drug offenses and punishable by seriously harmful consequences. When I was charged with possession of a Schedule I substance, I lost almost $5,000 worth of financial aid that was vital to me this past semester. I'm a first-generation student. My higher education is a rare blessing. I'm also an independent student. This means that I support myself to the point where I do not include my parents on my educational documents, such as my FAFSA. Many other first-generation students can relate to me. The same people who are primarily affected by cannabis criminalization are students of color, students from working-class, low-income socioeconomic.
Robin, thank you for coming tonight. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Pat Bates, and I live at 264 Cherokee Ridge, Athens, Georgia. And I'm here to speak against number 20, marijuana local ordinance, and 22. The reason, I'm a mother and a grandmother, and I have 11 grandkids. And I've had experience. I've had a son that did drugs, and marijuana is the gateway to harder drugs. And if it wasn't for that he began to get some consequences, he would have been further. But he did do LSD, and all these communities, all these people that are bringing this stuff around, this laced with a lot of different things. And my son actually almost lost his mind later on in his body because it stayed in his body for years, and then he went to have wisdom teeth out, and it messed him up. So I'm very opposed to anything that's going to cause more children to test and experiment with because now it's, oh, well, that's no problem. Just do it. So that's my thing on the marijuana. The thing on, I read this whole thing about whereas, 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 y'all's, what you're against, why you think you can go against the Supreme Court of America and you can go against the legal thing of Georgia. But the reason I'm saying it is because I do have 11 grandkids. Three of my grandkids are adopted. One, two are Hispanic, and one is partly black. And I'm here for the children. They have a right to life. They can be adopted. They have a right to life. And this has been the, people have prayed and prayed and prayed. This is the year, 50th year, it's the God year of Jubilee, that these babies are going to have life. And so I think everybody needs to know, y'all are the gatekeepers to this community. So if these teenagers start dying and more serious problems, it's on your blood. If these babies die and they're not cared for, because they can be given away, they can be cared for. They have a right to life, just like my friend said. So I'll take up my time and stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Have a good evening. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Hi, my name is, sorry, let me take this off. My name is Raiden Washington. I live at 164 Berlin Court. I'm speaking to items number 20 and 22. I'm also the chapter leader of Students for Simple Drug Policy at UGA, the vice chair of SSDP National, arising UGA Law Second Year, and vice president of Outlaw, our queer and gender expansive org at the law school. I'm coming as a constituent as well to ask you all to uplift bodily autonomy by passing the Reproductive Justice Resolution, as well as comprehensively decriminalizing misdemeanor marijuana possession by including the following new policy terms with the LRC's approved version, referring to the CDO version of the ordinance. I would like to request that you all require scientific testing verification rather than suspicion of marijuana possession based on sight or smell as grounds for probable cause for search and seizure instead of the current CDO language regarding probable cause. Additionally, I would like you all to adopt the CDO's Page 1 language to address civil alternative systemic inequities and marginalization. Furthermore, it would be great if you could divest law enforcement resources into vulnerable communities so they can have harm reduction programming and education, release those incarcerated for, and expunge or restrict records of those charged with misdemeanor cannabis possession, require, or sorry, I said that one, and prevent guilty or no low contend area pleas to marijuana possession from being used for sentence enhancement. As you're aware, the 2018 Hemp Act made prosecuting marijuana possession offenses more difficult because it became difficult to distinguish between legal hemp and illegal marijuana. Despite that, the War on Drugs continues to disenfranchise communities across racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, gender, and sexuality identity lines with old germ-crot tactics by making members from marginalized communities more susceptible to criminalization. For example, LGBTQ plus youth are 19% more likely to be suicidal than members of the community who are straight. About 37.6% of those in the LGBTQ plus community identify as using marijuana. Therefore, their likelihood to be arrested goes up. You've already heard the statistics from the ACLU about black Georgians being three times more likely than white Georgians to be arrested for marijuana possession. Furthermore, in 2018, the same year the Hemp Act was passed and prosecution difficulty went up, Georgia made 52,000 marijuana arrests for possession, roughly 40% of the Athens population, and had the fifth highest cannabis possession arrest rate in the entire nation. With more Georgians dying annually from overdose than homicide or firearms, marijuana decriminalization is an important step towards normalizing conversations about health-based approaches to drug policy to stop the overdose epidemic and to end mass incarceration here in our state. Furthermore, our proposed cannabis decriminalization measures seek to support rather than criminalize the aforementioned groups because they support the city's aims in the Good Neighbor section of our budget for this year to address racism, trauma, harm, and violence in our community, reducing criminal supervision population, providing alternatives to arrests, so on and so forth. Furthermore, though local marijuana possession arrest numbers have been extremely low lately, even one person's life being ruined by an arrest due to a lifetime inability to secure housing, benefits, education, and employment that follows, even if they're not prosecuted, is one life too many. Having an ordinance on the books.
Thanks for coming. Your time's up tonight. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name's Jesus Rubio. I am a resident of Athens, 115 Woodlake Place. I'm here to talk about item 12 and item 20, both which I believe are items of racial justice and economic justice. When we're talking about climate change in the state of Georgia, Georgia currently averages about 20 dangerous heat days a year. By 2050, it is projected to see more than 90 such days a year. Drought will also have an impact on the production of peanuts, pecans, peaches, and the sweet onions, all of which grow in Georgia. The historic 2007 drought cost the Georgia agriculture industry $339 million in crop losses. And additionally, more than 4.6 million people living in Georgia, or 48% of the state's population, are living in areas at elevated risk of wildfire. I think that Athens has a very unique opportunity to take leadership on this issue. The Clean and Renewable Energy Campaign serves as a moral leadership opportunity for Athens Clark County and for the rest of the state to follow the lead of our county. If we don't invest in renewable energy, we risk only worsening the impacts of climate change in Athens Clark County. We no longer have 10, 20, or 30 years. Climate change already exists, and we already see some of the impacts that it's had on our neighbors here in Georgia and across the country. Additionally, on item 20, according to the ACLU's original analysis, marijuana arrests now account for over half of all drug arrests in the United States. Of the 8.2 marijuana arrests between 2001 and 2010, 88% were for simply having marijuana. Nationwide, the arrest data revealed one consistent trend, significant racial bias. Despite roughly equal usage rates, blacks are 3.73 times more likely than whites to be arrested for the usage of marijuana. This is a racial issue. This is an economic issue. As we've seen plenty of residents mention, lives have been destroyed by arrest due to the possession of marijuana, and in many other states, they are legal. No longer should Athens Clark residents be affected and impacted by this. So please support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesus. Appreciate you visiting with us. Good evening. Just let us know your name and items you're speaking to.
Good evening. My name is Erin Stacer. I'm speaking to items 20 and 22. And I'll be brief because I am respectful of the fact that there's so many awesome people out who want to get their voices heard today. Woo! I just want to applaud these two items. I think they're very important, especially in taking very, very small steps towards decarceration. And so both of these are good in that way, and this is going to help Athens Clark County become the kind of community that values people over profit, that recognizes that incarceration and punitive consequences barely, if ever, actually prevent crime, nor do they promote changes in behavior. We can be the kind of community who stands up to harmful laws and cultural norms to be an even more nurturing and in turn thriving place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate you visiting with us. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item or items you're speaking to.
Hey, everyone. Megan Westbrook, 145 Three Oaks Drive. I'm here in support of item 20 and item 22. I would really like to see the language included in the CDO, included in your vote and what finally passes along. You guys have already heard a lot regarding marijuana decrim. But in the idea of us being a safer, healthier Athens, and the idea of us being a more compassionate Athens, reading through the strategic plan and seeing that you, as a commission, have decided that's what you want as well, I think this is a really important step towards that in keeping people out of our jail. And as far as item 22, I wanted to speak as somebody who is currently experiencing pregnancy and have a little bit of a charge around it right now. It's very incredibly demanding. If anybody in this room, I'm sure some of you have been pregnant. Many of you never will be pregnant, either because of your body type or your choice or the way that life plays out. But it's incredibly demanding physically, psychologically. I am literally sharing my body with somebody, and to not get to choose that, to not get to choose whether or not you share your body and your resources and your time. My body has changed. My life has changed right now, and it will always be changed. And I chose it, and I have a support system, a loving support system, and it's great. I'm so happy for it. But I've also been the person who has been pregnant, and I did not, not only not have that support system, but I was in a dangerous, toxic relationship that I had to flee across the country to get away from, and I still have to do things to block this person from reaching me. And I can't imagine if I was pregnant and had a child with this incredibly toxic person. So I think having that choice is just imperative, and we need to protect that. We have to actively protect it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item or items to which you're speaking.
My name's Devonte Jones. I live in 105 The Preserve Drive, and I'm speaking to items 20 and 22, maybe even a little bit of 12. We'll see how it goes. So I served in the Air Force for four years, and the whole time, we're talking about freedom. So when we come and we talk about freedom, well, we still throw people in prison for a plant. We still arrest them, destroy their lives for a plant. That's wrong. That's not freedom. When we talk about women or birthing people having the right to their own body, and we're saying, no, you don't have that right anymore, that's not freedom. That's not real freedom. And if you want to even tie, if we're talking about, oh, the child has a right to life, but if you aren't talking about climate change, then you're not speaking to me. You're not saying anything. Because the thing is, things like renewable energy, these things, these have vast effects on the planet, which has even more effects on lives. on the planet, which has even more effects on lives than people give it credit for. You speak about abortion being immoral now, but when it comes time to talk about climate change, where are you at? What happens to the people that have to flee the countries that can no longer live in those areas anymore because they have, the dew point is too high to where your body's sweat, you can't even cool yourself off with sweat anymore? They have to move. What are you going to do then? So the Renewable Energy Act is good. It's a good first step, moving, we can be a leader in that because it's a very important issue. Decriminal marijuana is a very important issue. It's also a racialized issue, as people before me have said. The initial point of the war on drugs started in the Nixon era was to, because they couldn't make it illegal to be black or Mexican, or against the war. So what they did is they started the war on drugs so that they could arrest and impugn black, Mexican people, and also go against the counterculture movement that was happening at the time. We don't have to keep this trend going. The war on drugs has done nothing to help anyone. It has only hurt communities and hurt other people. The decriminal marijuana, the gateway drug, not here in it. We have alcohol. That's legal. That's more of a gateway. You have cigarettes. That's legal. So let's start, let's decriminal marijuana. We can start there, but we need to treat addictions as health issues more than moral failings because it doesn't help anyone. And if it wasn't clear before, people should have the right to choose to do it with their bodies, what they want. That is what freedom is, it's fundamental. You're going to have the government tell you what you can and can't do with your body, especially when it doesn't pertain to anyone else. Pregnancy, you can't sneeze on someone and get them pregnant. So with that, I see my time.
Thanks, Devonte. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Hi, my name is Julie Jaeger. I live at 437 South Rock Springs, and I'll be speaking about 12, 20, and 22. When it comes to 12, I just think it's really, really important that we prioritize the well-being of our planet. I don't have too much else to say about it. I just think that that is kind of number one. But like I mentioned, I'm also here to talk about Items 20 and 22. I am very confident that the Marijuana Decriminalization Ordinance that you all will be voting on will change lives. Being arrested and charged with possession can ruin someone's life, and the unfortunate reality of possession arrests is that people of color are disproportionately targeted by police. Black marijuana users, as many people have said, are almost four times more likely to be arrested for possession than white users, though there's no difference in usage. Being arrested can make it incredibly challenging to find a job. It can wreck someone's ability to stay afloat financially, among a million other things. And so I urge you all to pass the Commission-defined option tonight to ensure that members of our community are not being targeted and treated like criminals for choosing to use a plant. We cannot continue to waste ACC funds and ruin lives because of a substance that is less addictive and less dangerous than alcohol, nicotine, caffeine, and sugar. I appreciate Commissioners Denson, Hul, and Parker for creating the Commission-defined option, and really hope that you all will pass this tonight, as we all deserve the right to be able to make decisions about our own bodies. My strong belief in bodily autonomy is also the reason that I am speaking in support of Item 22. I am so sad, so angry, and so disappointed that I have to be here to talk with you all about the overturning of Roe v. Wade and Georgia's recent six-week abortion ban. I am so appreciative of everyone who has shared their stories of abortion, but I'm also heartbroken that we are having to tell these stories just to be able to help people understand that women deserve the right to make decisions about their own bodies. I so deeply hope that you all recognize that the overturning of Roe v. Wade is an intense attack on women, especially on low-income women of color, and that it is imperative that Athens refuses to support forced childbirth. We live in the country with the highest maternal mortality rate of all industrialized nations, and studies have shown that states with more restrictive abortion policies have higher rates of maternal mortality. As a resident of Georgia, it makes me incredibly ashamed and terrified that there are inequities and policies in place that make Georgia one of the most dangerous states to be pregnant in, but women here may not have the choice. Though I recognize that state laws overpower local laws, it is so crucial that you all pass Item 22, making it so that ACC funds cannot be used to criminalize women for doing what's best for them. Athens cannot be a community that sits silently by while women continue to die avoidable deaths. Deciding whether or not to get an abortion can be an extremely difficult decision, and passing Item 22 will allow you to do your part in ensuring that women in this community can make that decision for themselves. Tonight, you all have the opportunity to show that you care deeply for the members of this community and their freedoms, and I urge you all to do so by passing Items 20 and 22. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Sure thing. Hi, I am Brenna Dula, and I live at 437 South Rock Street here in Athens, and I'm here today to speak in favor of Agenda Items 20, 22, and maybe a little bit of 12 and 13. So I want to first express my strong support for the Agenda Item Number 20, and specifically, I would like to urge all of you to approve the Commission-defined option for this ordinance. I believe Section 2 of the CDO is so important to include in this ordinance because it prevents marijuana possession from being used as probable cause for any other violation. While I support this ordinance and know that reducing punishment for marijuana possession to a small fine is a vast improvement to the current state law, it is still not enough. Without including Section 2 of the CDO, law enforcement officers are still given unchecked authority to violate Fourth Amendment rights by claiming the smell of marijuana as a justification for stopping, searching, and arresting innocent victims. I urge all of you to please adopt this CDO to protect the rights of all Athenians. For those of you who are unsure on how you feel about including this in the measure, I bet that you might feel differently if it happened to you or someone that you know or love. This happens. It is real, and please consider keeping that CDO as part of the ordinance. For Agenda Item 22, I cannot say anything that hasn't already been said and said better by many people who have already spoken. This is an issue that will never affect me directly. As a man, my bodily autonomy and right to make decisions about my own healthcare has never been questioned. I never thought that this would not be the case for women in this country. I never imagined I would have to stand in front of a government body and speak in favor of a woman's fundamental right to choose, but here we are. I strongly support this resolution, and especially the CDO. We as a community need to do all we can to prevent our government from creating a society where women dying for preventable causes is preferable to recognizing women's rights to control their own bodies. Please adopt this resolution and CDO to make sure our tax dollars and government resources are not being used to punish women. As far for 13, the Prince Avenue Pilot Project, I think this is a great project to approve in light of just passing Division Zero Resolution, so I really support that and hope that goes forward. And as far as Number 12, the Clean and Renewable Energy, I mostly want to comment because I have heard someone audibly chuckling at people speaking in support of this, and I just want to say that 99 to 100% of climate scientists say that anthropogenic climate change is a fact and something that we need to be aware of right now and work to avoid. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Brenna. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Hi, I'm Katie Gudrum, and I'm here to speak in favor of Item 13, the Prince Avenue Pilot Project. I'm an urban planner, and one of my favorite studies concluded that to create a bike network that everyone actually uses, you need a network of both slow-speed neighborhood streets and physically protected routes on major corridors like Prince Avenue. So I'm really excited to see this first physically-protected lane project. I think the bottom line really is safety. The more car travel lanes on a road in an urban area and the higher speeds on that road, the more injuries and deaths you have. It's a lot more important than drivers worried about convenience, and it's safer for drivers as well. So I think this is a great opportunity to create, take a first step to create a really fair transportation network that's comfortable and convenient for everyone.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item you're speaking to.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Blaze, 140 Inglewood Avenue. I'm on a couple of transportation committees and commissions, but I'm just here tonight speaking on Item 13, the Prince Avenue Pilot Project. As a person, a vulnerable body who bikes and walks on Prince Avenue every other day, I'm thrilled that we have the opportunity to do something with Prince Avenue. You heard from the user group. You know that they went through study after study, came up with these recommendations, and now we're on the eve or on the cusp of taking some action. So someone who bikes or walks Prince Avenue regularly, this is the one road that I have been verbally harassed on, which is kind of surprising, the locally-owned side of Prince. And I know sticks and stones will break your bones. Who cares? But an SUV will kill me. No joke, right? We know that a car traveling 40 miles an hour, if they strike a pedestrian or someone biking, a person only has an 80% likely chance of dying. So it is time to take some action. I hope that you have heard the amount of care and consideration that is going into this pilot project. This is not just some sort of temporary thrown-together thing. There's going to be studies. We're having the Zicla zippers, and for those who are watching at home, that's kind of a physical barrier that is harmful to car tires, but not to you and your bike. So I'm very excited about that. If this does become permanent, our improvements to Barber Street, which you'll hear about in an upcoming meeting, will interface well with these new facilities, so that's very exciting. It's just another reason why now is the time to do something with Prince Avenue. And I'm so excited because you all, you are the commission, and you are the mayor who's going to make this happen. We know there's 3,800 people who bike Athens every day, and that statistic comes from GDOT. And we've also learned that 57% of the people who bike around Athens are people of color. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you're preparing to launch this pilot project and look at your data in a couple of months. Now is the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening. Glad to see you on that side of the podium.
626 Cobham. Y'all are having quite a night. It's, you know, it's an exciting way. I came tonight to do two compliments and then so talk on some of the ordinances. And those, do you want me to name them as I talk? Why don't I? I really want to commend staff for their recommendation on the Taylor Grady House and for the thought with which they looked at this and gathered information. It meant a lot to everybody. Thank you so much. I also want to thank Lieutenant Geiger, who is the head of the co-respondence teams. And we had a little problem at Cobham Triangle, and they came and they talked with people and they helped us, and they connected resources and were really impressive. Then I want to say that Prince Avenue, and I kind of tried to write this, Prince Avenue, biking is inevitable in this town and should be. This is a student-oriented, young town. We can do this, and we have definite spines that we should look at first, and Prince Avenue is one of them. But anyway, and think what a proud legacy this will be for this mayor and commission. Don't do a test. Do a demonstration of your commitment to biking, is my suggestion. Go all the way to Milledge, in other words. Okay, then the fraternity. This is a great fraternity, y'all. These are gentlemen, and they're people that I don't think have behavioral problems. But zoning can't look at behavior, and you can. And I think your citizens don't trust you to enforce the law if there's a group of people that do break noise ordinances. Look at the statistics that have been gathered by Cobhmites on this. 1,900 calls that they went out for, that doesn't mean the calls and the complaints. That means that they went out there. Anyway, I don't have to retell what she did, an excellent job of gathering information that showed that your courts should be charging more than $1. Look at other university communities. Judd can do this. They have bonding systems for fraternities and sororities, and they make it where they know what they have to do, and they know that it's going to cost them if they don't, and they disrupt other people's quality of life. So I think that we need to do better. Okay, and then last but not least, I want to congratulate the District Attorney's Office for reaching out for monies that are available now and bringing them in. I think that 17, 18, and 19, that's very good. And then the marijuana and the abortion, I was in Crestwell, '67 through '69, and I know what it feels like to hear about girls that are dropped on the lawn at St. Mary's, dead. So I think you should, I applaud what you're doing on both abortion and marijuana.
Gwen, thank you for visiting with us. Good evening. Good try. Just let us know your name and the items to which you're speaking.
Okay. My name is Chris Shaara. I live at 127 Herman Street, and I'm speaking in support of Item Number 13, Prince Avenue Corridor Improvements, as a person who walks, bikes, and drives. First, some old history. Over 20 years ago, I spoke here in support of the road diet reconfiguration of Baxter Street, which was dangerous for driving and everything else. I remember mentioning my grandmother, who at the time didn't feel safe driving to the hospital or the library. Thankfully, because the commission was willing to try something different, safety soon improved. Baxter was the first road diet in Athens, and the reconfiguration benefited all users. An extensive study showed dramatic safety improvements, with car accidents cut in half. Economic benefits to the blighted corridor also became apparent. With grandma-friendly enhancements such as a convenient center-turn lane, Baxter became more attractive to businesses. My grandmother test is no longer, but today I am healthy and well, thanks to many months of cancer treatment at University Cancer and Blood Center. I mention this personal situation because of how I drove to my frequent treatments at UCBC's two locations near the other end of Prince Avenue. As the crow flies, Prince is my most direct route, but even with the current configuration, I find it less efficient. For traffic speed and flow, the loop is the way to go. Many of us can agree that speed isn't what's currently needed on Prince Avenue as it approaches downtown. The need is to function more like a downtown street, designed to serve a variety of users and ideally create a better atmosphere. Athens is no longer the small town of my childhood. It's a city with urban requirements. This plan is an exciting reimagination of the corridor closest to downtown. This section deserves to be visionary and vibrant, not an ongoing source of stress. Thanks for your efforts towards a happier and healthier Prince Avenue for us all.
Thank you, Chrisa. We've enjoyed the song before. This may be the first choreography, so glad to have you here. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the items to which you're speaking.
Hi, my name is Emma Marzullo. I live on campus at 385 River Road. I'm a senior in UGA's Political Science Program, and tonight I'm here to speak on Items 20 and 22. I would just like to show my support for Athens-Clark County marijuana decriminalization and the resolution to protect abortion care. At the end of the day, what we're doing is harm reduction. If we want to have conversations about how safely to use marijuana without fentanyl, and we want to have conversations about how to provide and get abortions that are safe and not going to kill women and other people with uteruses, then we need to protect them, and we can regulate them as well if we decriminalize these things. That's not what our county money should be going to. Yeah, at the end of the day, you know, you don't, these are nonviolent offenses. These are things that are helping people's lives, and you don't want to hurt your community members or your constituents by failing to decriminalize marijuana and criminalizing abortions and those providing them. You know, let Athens-Clark County live freely, and living freely means, you know, smoking a joint or getting an abortion, but this is about privacy. These are about rights and individual liberties, and it's your job to protect them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emma. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the items to which you're speaking.
Yes, sir. My name is Bridgett Showbridge, and I've been a resident of Clark County for the past five and a half years. One of my heroes is a man named Billy Graham, and he was an evangelist in this nation for decades. And he had a saying that he became known for, and he would say, "The Bible says..." And I know that in our nation, we don't give the Word of God the honor and the reverence that we used to, but I'm going to speak tonight and use my time tonight to speak a few things from his word having to do with the abortion issue. So in Jeremiah 1:5, it says, "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you; before you were born, I separated you for myself." born, I separated you for myself." And in Psalm 139, it says, "For you fashioned me in my inmost being; you knit me together in my mother's womb. I thank you because I am awesomely made, wonderfully; your works are wonders; I know this very well. My bones were not hidden from you when I was being made in secret, intricately woven in the depths of the earth. Your eyes could see me as an embryo, but in your book all my days were already written. My days had been shaped before any of them existed. God, how I prize your thoughts, how many of them there are." And then in Genesis, in the beginning of this book, there was two brothers. Cain killed his brother Abel. And this was God's response to Cain. He said, "Where is Abel, your brother?" And he replied, "I don't know. Am I my brother's guardian?" And he said, "What have you done?" God said, "What have you done? The voice of your brother's blood is crying out for me from the ground. Now you are cursed from the ground, which has opened its mouth to receive your brother's blood at your hands." So there's literally an attachment with blood, and we don't want blood on our hands. So in conclusion, the Bible says, "For God so loved the world, that he gave the blood of his only Son, that whosoever believes in him should not perish, but have everlasting life," and that's for all. We don't need marijuana or abortions as much. We don't need those. We need Jesus. That's who we need.
Thank you, Bridgette. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item to which you're speaking.
My name is Christina Morris. I was born and raised here my whole life. Born and raised Athens, Georgia. I live in District 10. And I similarly have come for the issue of the resolution to provide access to abortion. And we should just call it what it is, access to ending a life. Okay, we have the United States of American flag, red, white, and blue. Our forefathers spilled their blood for us to have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. They beseeched Almighty God to create the Constitution, to protect our life, our lives. They gave their lives, their fortunes, and their honor to protect our right to life. Children in the womb are children. They're people, they're persons. When a mother is murdered and she's pregnant, that is a double homicide because it's two people. And the state of Georgia has now ruled that abortion is illegal after six weeks. I do not understand, ladies and gentlemen, why you would have a resolution to provide access to killing our future citizens of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, or the United States, when it's against the law. And I am opposed to my tax dollars being used to cart people off to another state. I don't know what your resolution is, but all I need to know is the title of it. And let me tell you, I am missing two of my other siblings because my mother had access to abortion. I was robbed of my own family because of access to abortion. And this is not what I just say. It is what God Almighty says. And I'm here to remind you that you are responsible. You have been put in seats of power, of decision, of authority, and you will hold yourself accountable to God whether you believe in him or not. One day you will see him, and he will ask you to give an account for the decisions you made. And let me remind you what his word says. Psalm 139. "O Lord, you have searched me, and you know me; and you know when I sit and when I rise. You perceive my thoughts from afar; you discern my going out and my lying down; you are familiar with all my ways. For you created my inmost being; you knit me together in my mother's womb. I praise you because I am fearfully and wonderfully made; your works are wonderful; I know that full well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in the secret place, when I was woven together in the depths of the earth. Your eyes saw my unformed body. All the days ordained for me were written in your book, before one of them came to be."
Thank you for visiting with us, Christina. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item to which you're speaking.
Hi, my name is Agnes Chazinsky. I live at 150 Wood Valley Lane. That's in Forest Heights. Used to be Jesse's District. Sorry, Jesse. I'm here to talk about the marijuana decriminalization. I'm actually not against this. I don't think it's a bad idea, but I want to take it and think about it another way as well, too. I think it's really important that if we look at this, we also need to look at it like we would look with alcohol. If I am in a car and stopped, and let's say we decriminalize marijuana, and I have a joint in my car, but I'm not prosecuted for that, great. But if I have an open container of beer, on the other hand, I'm in trouble. So how many times does someone need to be stopped? Five times? If I had a joint five times in my car and I'm unstopped, is nothing happened to me? But if I'm stopped five times with an open container of beer? That might suggest I might have an alcohol problem, that I'm that compelled to carry it and have it with me all the time. Are we, is there a component for drug and alcohol education with this, for multiple stops for people? I'm not saying arrest the person or throw them in jail because it can really hurt them, especially younger age or even older age. If you're an engineer and you're stopped with a joint, you lose your license. If you're a nurse and you're stopped, you will lose your license, same as a doctor. Anybody who has to get a license, a hairdresser, from the Secretary of State, you will lose your livelihood. So I'm okay. That's fine. I think we should give people mercy. But how much? Is there, I really think there should be alcohol education or treatment. If someone is maybe using, they might have mental health issues. You know, why do, we need to discover why is a person being stopped multiple times? They could be a danger to others, their families. There could be other things going on. So I really hope that people will maybe add this component to your legislation. It's important, and I think that's something as a compassionate community that we're striving to be, that we might be, add that mental health component to it, because there's a lot that's going on in our world right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chazinsky. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item you're speaking to.
Good evening. My name is Carlton Watson. Greetings everybody. And I'm going to be concerned at 20, and quite a few things already been said concerning the marijuana. And I am ex from that back in my younger days. And I know that young people and older people as well, feels okay to, you know, get that, get high for relaxation. What I see now that they have, I've been told, they have put so much stuff into marijuana, marijuana that is, that people are doing all kinds of things that come from the marijuana because they're adding other stuff in it. That's what I've been told now. And so I've noticed from all types of police reports, people are driving their car on the freeway, running off the road, hitting poses and these type things. And they get the reports saying that they were hearing sound in their head, you know, when they were running, because of the, you know, smoking this stuff and they have whatever they have put in it. And it's really running out of young people. And that's why so many are incarcerated, and they are dying. And I'd be just have something to do with the drug selling and the gang violence because they're being exposed to it. And so I would say that we need to, as the state, educate the people who have a problem from drug, alcohol, let's sit down and talk about it, seek some help, you know. But it's still continue, you know, the smoke and the drink because the problem is getting worse and worse. And also, in the verse of the abortion situation, I'm a firm believer, and I know what the Lord God said. The Lord Jesus Christ came, that we might have life, and that we might have it more abundantly. I mean, that he came, that we might live and not die. So that means that we, as the people on the earth today, the family, we should give some wisdom and get some knowledge and allow the Lord God himself order our steps. And that way we'll be able to deviate from some of the gang violence, school shootings, and murder like left and right. Just like, I mean, it's really, it's frightening. We never know, because people are caught up in the drug addiction, and they're doing things just like it's a game. And so I think we need to consider never ever, you know, give people permission, permission rather, to possess marijuana, as ladies earlier talked about alcohol. I mean, everybody, you know, do their own personal thing. But when it gets to a point where you are doing stuff to harm the nation, harm your people...
Thanks for visiting with us, Mr. Watson.
Mother have killed their babies and...
Appreciate you coming. Your time is up, and have a good one. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item to which you're speaking.
Hey, I am Carrie Ritzler. I'm speaking on item 12, the Clean and Renewable Energy Plan. I just want to thank everyone for, thank everyone on the commission for their support for clean and renewable energy thus far, and thank the people who have contributed to this plan that's been in the works for several years. I urge you to pass it and then see it as, not as a box that has been checked, but as the beginning of a transition that is going to require attention and that if done correctly and if done right with, you know, with everyone paying close attention to make sure that it is, that we can fulfill the vision of a just and equitable energy transition that brings clean air, lower energy bills, and jobs to our community, and focuses resources on, and benefits on marginalized communities. So I just thank everybody for their time. This has been something that I know several of us have worked on for many years in the community and in the city, and I appreciate it, and looking forward to hearing y'all vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Thanks for coming down. Good evening. Thanks for visiting with us. Just let us know your name and the item to which you're speaking.
Yeah, my name is Carly Fabian, and I wanted to speak on Agenda Items 20 and 22 in favor of decriminalization of marijuana and of reproductive health care. So firstly, regarding reproductive health care, obviously it is wrong to force people to incubate fetuses. It's an infringement on our right to bodily autonomy, so therefore we shouldn't use any city funds to criminalize what is really a routine health care procedure. Regarding marijuana, if a drug is relatively safe and its benefits outweigh its risks, the government has no place to punish people for using it. This is absolutely the case for marijuana. I grew up in Colorado during the time that it was legalized, and over the course of 10 years, I've seen really ordinary people of all ages, backgrounds, political leanings benefit medically, economically, and in other ways. So I don't think marijuana should have been criminalized in the first place, so I don't think we should be expending any more funds towards that criminalization. Thank you.
Thank you for visiting, Carly. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item to which you're speaking.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Sharp, and I'd like to thank the esteemed members of the council for sitting with us through all this. This is what democracy looks like. Mayor Getz, I'd like to add a correction to my last public testimony. My address is actually 270 Barber Street. Additionally, I wanted to clarify that I was arrested for misdemeanor cannabis possession when I was 17 and violated my probation. This arrest was my initiation into the criminal injustice system. I was nervous speaking about my traumatic experiences and often get nervous when testifying. The reason being, I live in constant fear that I can be rounded up at any time, taken into custody, and prosecuted for an arbitrary offense. A quick poll will reveal, excuse me, a public policy poll in 2018 revealed that 72% of Georgians approve marijuana decriminalization. According to state data, marijuana arrests have dropped by over 50% since Clarkson decriminalized possession. Marijuana is not a gateway drug, however marijuana prohibition is a gateway to a criminal record. Drug dealers don't ID in the illegal market as a gateway to accessing harder drugs. Additionally, teen drug use has not increased in legal states. When someone is arrested for possessing marijuana, they are arrested for possessing marijuana. When they're arrested for smoking marijuana, police officers, drug recognition experts, our taxpayer money goes to that, can recognize somebody who's under the influence of marijuana. So there is a difference, and they will be charged differently. Additionally, if drug education worked, we wouldn't have a lot of problems we have today. So adding that just adds extra burden, and it doesn't do any good. Additionally, discretion allows for prosecutors and police to pick and choose which cases to pursue with criminal charges. A directive by the district attorney is not a law, and the Athens City Council is the proper legal vehicle to direct law enforcement actions. Law enforcement has the ability to purchase cheap and easy-to-use kits that test THC levels. A quick Google search will reveal this. It's only a matter of time before they are utilizing this in squad cars. In conclusion, the city, excuse me, should pass the ordinance with the amended language from, without the CDO. Again, we have been working on this for many, many years. We've been chasing y'all down in state legislatures, hog dinners, city councils. We will not rest until we get marijuana decriminalized in Athens. Thank you.
Thanks for visiting, Jeremy. Good evening. Just let us know your name and the item to which you're speaking.
Hi, yes. The item number, one second. I believe it's 20 and 21 are the repro-freedom resolution and the decriminalization of marijuana resolution.
And just let us know your name for the record.
Oh. My name is Stella, Stella Zine, Stella Pace. Hello, mayor and commissioners. I'm here to speak in support of the Reproductive Freedom Resolution. Abortion is health care. Abortion is a common medical procedure and an important component of good public health policy. According to the American Public Health Association, one in four women have abortions in their lifetime. That includes other genders who get pregnant, too. Laws that restrict abortion access negatively access those under the poverty level the most. Athens has a large population that live under the poverty level. I'm so grateful that our commissioners have written a resolution to protect reproductive health care. As I spoke a few weeks ago, this is personal for me. Being able to access an abortion saved my life when I had a miscarriage. A pregnancy I would have carried to term, but I would have gone septic and possibly died had I not had access to an abortion. And not having access to a safe, affordable abortion, pro-Roe v. Wade, almost killed my mother. My mother went to an unsafe provider, the only that she had access to in the deep south at the time, who physically and sexually assaulted her and left her traumatized and hemorrhaging to die. So that's pre-Roe v. Wade. And although my story and that of my mother are of white women in the deep south, systemic racism means that black and brown women are more criminalized for abortion and reproductive health care choices. We need to follow the science. The science is there. It's said that when white people get a cold, black folks get pneumonia. This is a metaphor that applies to reproductive justice issues, too. Due to years of pushing back on reproductive health care in Georgia, we are number two in maternal mortality rates for black women. And because the Supreme Court, the broken Supreme Court decision, in the last two weeks, Georgia's six-week abortion ban has gone into effect, and people usually don't even know they're pregnant before six weeks. The sodas has been captured by the extreme religious right, and I know that, you know, I'm just saying, that doesn't represent, well, the majority of Americans. And with constant attacks on sexual education and public health, we know we are going to see more maternal mortality fatalities going up, but we can do something about this. We can stand up against this catastrophic attack on reproductive and human rights. Lives are at stake. There are many of us in Athens who are counting on the mayor and commissioners to pass this repro-freedom resolution as a response to the public health emergency. I am also in full support of the decriminalization of marijuana resolution. I'm a person in long-time recovery. I'm a certified peer specialist in Georgia. And I know from working with people for many years that criminalization does not help people in recovery, y'all. The drug war does...
Thank you, Stella.
...just one more sentence, irreparable damage, and it's a tool that channels mostly black and brown folks into the jails. People need health care, not handcuffs.
Thanks for visiting with us. Good evening. Just let us know your name for the record and the item to which you're speaking.
My name is Josh Russell. I'm from 255 Seagres Circle, and I'm speaking on items 20 and 22 regarding cannabis reclassification and access to health care. And I'm speaking on items 20 and 22 regarding cannabis reclassification and access to health care. So I spoke last time and y'all heard a lot of things I had to say. I just want to say this time, you know, I look in front of me and I see a lot of people who truly do care about their community. And, you know, the fact that you guys are putting these bills on the table show that you guys care about your community and that means a lot. And that gives me a lot of hope in my community government and my government as a whole. So I just want to speak to some other things people were saying here. One as to item 20. The the whole worry about cannabis being used as a gateway drug. There's no real scientific evidence to back that claim. And also to people saying that, you know, people deserve like a little lesson for using cannabis. The thing is like a lesson for someone is ruins the life of another person. And it disproportionately affects people based on the income of their household. And that's just not okay. No laws should do that. And as to 22, there's a lot of people, you know, using justifications from the Bible and from Christianity to go against that. And, you know, I'm not against Christianity, but there is a clear separation between church and state in this country, and I think we should remember that. Because it's a very important thing. We can't deny women the access to health care because of personal religious beliefs. It's just not right. So, yeah, in conclusion, we just need to stop filling our jails and women deserve health care. And also I do believe that there should be an addition to this bill to stop search and seizure. You know, cops just being able to say they smell weed and then tearing apart someone's car. It's not okay. And I think that it's it's very questionable thing to allow them to do when they can just say that whenever they want. So I think that that'd be a very important part to include. So I'm really glad that you guys are introducing these items. I hope we can take it even further in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening. Thanks for coming down. Just let us know your name and item you're speaking to.
Yes, sir. My name is Chaplain Cole Napper, and I reside in District Six. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. My name is Chaplain Cole Napper, and I was born and raised here in Athens, Clark County. I speak tonight in support of Agenda Item Number 20, and I support its passage. I stand before you tonight as an Athenian who has spent her entire life trying to make her hometown of Athens proud of her. And I hope you're proud of me, Athens. Because I stand before you today as a graduate of Clark Central High School and Spelman College and a black woman from Athens, Georgia, who was able to earn three master's degrees in education. Two of those master's degrees are from the Ivy League. In addition, I am a United States Army War Veteran who proudly served in four post nine 11 tours of duty in support of operations in Iraq and Afghanistan, including the last one, which was over a decade ago, where I served as a commander in command of troops in Afghanistan. For my service, I was awarded two Bronze Star Medals, two meritorious service medals, and a combat infantryman's badge, a CIB, years before they would allow women to serve in combat. I am extremely grateful to have survived those four tours of duty in the Middle East. But after I left active duty service and moved to New York City for graduate school at Columbia University, I struggled with post traumatic stress disorder and crippling anxiety that threatened every aspect of my life, including my ability to perform as both a student and a teacher. After seeking treatment at the Manhattan VA Hospital, the New York State Legislature passed legislation that allowed me to, under a physician's care, apply for and have a medical marijuana license issued to me. Without hyperbole, I stand before you today to say that the medicinal benefits of cannabis have saved my life. Growing up here in Athens, Georgia, I was taught that marijuana was evil, a gateway drug that could only lead to harder drugs like cocaine or meth. As a Christian, as a Christian, as a Christian and a faith leader, I really struggled to reconcile this new medicine that had made such a difference in my life with my faith. But then I got educated about the history of marijuana in this country and specifically the absolutely devastating and disproportionately disproportionate impact of marijuana enforcement on poor, black and brown communities. I only learned this through originally through Michelle Alexander Seminole Text, the new Jim Crow. I now know the numbers. I now am educated about the history of marijuana in this country. And I now understand that there's been no other single event that has stolen intergenerational wealth for me and my family in the way that criminal prosecution of some of my family members for minor possession has. The disproportionality in terms of black people and white people who are prosecuted for possession is shameful. I thank God for DA District Attorney Deborah Gonzalez, our progressive DA, who understood this disparity and came into office with her day one memo and proclaimed that she would not prosecute anyone for minor possession of cannabis. Historians will look back at this period in our city's history and marvel at how cruel we have been to prevent this medicine from being available to the masses. It is past time that the Georgia fully legalized both medical and adult use recreational cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Chaplain Napper. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item you're speaking to.
Hello, my name is Sarah Garing. I live at 140 Griffith Street. And I'm here to speak on two items. First, in support of the CDO that was introduced on item 13, the Prince Avenue Road Diet. I'm speaking specifically in support of the CDO because this project will improve the safety of this corridor for motorists, for pedestrians, and for cyclists, for all people who are on that street. And there is no reason to limit that safety benefit just to Barber. I believe that having going straight into from Pulaski to Millage will introduce long term cost savings to this project as all literature on road diets of this type has essentially shown that it's very successful. It does not cause more traffic. It does increase safety and it's a good idea. And so getting a start on that and going all the way to Millage is just going to improve our efficiency long term. Some specific items in that plan that are particularly good are the buffered bike lanes and the bump outs for better line of sight when turning from the driveways along Prince Avenue. I have become aware that the University of Georgia has opposed the Pulaski to Millage plan because it would prevent them from parking their buses and limousines for their big donors in front of the President's House on Prince. And I have to say that if any of you vote against this CDO, I will assume it's on those grounds and I will instruct everyone to laugh at you. I would also like to get in before complaints about increased traffic may come from this. Because as soon as one person experiences a two minute delay on their way down Prince in their car from Jackson County or wherever they're coming from, you will get complaints about it. And I would hope that you would not fold under this pressure. You have heard tonight, and I'm sure you all already know that we are in the middle of a climate catastrophe. And in order to address that, we will need to reduce vehicle miles traveled in addition to introducing cleaner and better fuels. And we cannot reduce vehicle miles traveled without making driving a little less convenient. I would also like to briefly speak on item 20. Again, I'm supporting the CDO. Specifically, the probable cause. If we believe marijuana should not be criminalized, then we must believe that probable cause should not exist for search and seizures because of the use of marijuana. I see him out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Again, but I, in my anxiety of presenting comments, the first time I forgot to present the 588 signatures.
Just leave that with the attorney. He'll distribute that. Thank you. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Grantum. I'm a Clark County resident for 12 years. I want to thank y'all first for listening to us speak about things that, you know, matter to us and are important for us in our community. I do own a legal cannabis honey business. So I take my honey from my honeybees and I infuse it with cannabis. And I've seen firsthand the healing effects and what is done for people. I've seen people in our community who are taking a cocktail of pills in the morning just to function and get through the day. And now they're they're taking cannabis products and it's really helping them out. So I know what it's doing for the community. And, you know, and how much it can give us relief, you know, here for our county. I do disagree with it being a gateway drug. I've personally smoked, you know, for a long time. One time when I was 18, I was, I was, you know, pulled over for a traffic stop. The roach, the officer found a roach in my ashtray. And what he did was just stomp it out and put it out and let me go. He knew at 18 that that could potentially ruin my life. Now, if I was possibly a different, from a different ethic background, that may not have been the same for them. And that's a, that just shows history, you know, with being three times, with say, the African American community being three times more likely to be pulled over. These are things that we really do need to address, you know, in our community because it's happening. You have, you know, let's say alcohol, for example, here in Clark County is a pretty popular tax revenue. You have 90,000 people, you know, a year die from alcohol. You have 400,000 people die from tobacco. But from THC and from cannabis and THC by itself, the chemical, there's been not a single person in the whole world die from it, from overdose or anything. If that doesn't say that the effects of it are better than, you know, say, just tobacco, for example, then that should speak for itself. And the fact it's still a Schedule One drug, which is, you know, by definition has no medicinal effects, but you deal, you have doctors who are writing prescription, you know, prescriptions for marijuana. That still kind of just contradicts itself off the Schedule One. But if somebody leaves, let's say, a dispensary like Franny's Pharmacy here in our our community, and they're driving with perfectly legal CBD in their car and an officer happens to smell that, and it is legal, then there's an absolute, you know, rights violation for the search and seizure of that vehicle, of that car. I mean, if it is, you know, and even the testing, even if it wasn't CBD, and if it's a small amount of testing, it costs more money for the county to test that THC or CBD or whatever it may be than what the ticket would cost if they are convicted. So that's something else, you know, to really think about. As far as, it's an absolute waste of our tax dollars, you know, going against this. I think it absolutely should be, you know, decriminalized for the testing of it. And as far as the Ontario Harm Network, they said that there's been no lab informed test with fentanyl laced marijuana because it's just, it's ethically wouldn't work. I mean, as far as the economy, the price of the marijuana, it would be way too expensive to buy it. And I think that's just, you know, terrible that somebody would think it would be laced up with that.
Thanks for coming to speak to us. Best to your sweet honeybees. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Mayor and Commissioner, my name's Gabriel Shippey, and I'm here to speak strongly in favor of items 12 and 20. Those items in particular are on my mind tonight because I think they present really great windows of opportunity for this body to do the right thing and improve the lives of your constituents. Just from a policy and a political standpoint, I think both those items kind of represent a very rare opportunity and sort of a low hanging fruit. I have a lot of empathy for the way that this body's hands are tied by state and federal government. Perhaps in more ways than I realized. Over the last four years, I've come to realize how much your hands are tied by the state. It's unfortunate. But these are things that are in your power tonight. We can't control state or government policy, can't control the laws that inhibit you from, you know, enacting the kind of progress that a lot of us would like to see. But this is a moment where I encourage all of you to really seize the moment and make a difference where you can. Climate. Speaking of item number 12, climate change. It's an enormous global issue. But we can do our part with this initiative. Fossil fuel companies, in my view, are committing crimes against humanity. And their enablers in the federal government should be ashamed of themselves. But again, here's a chance for this body has an act, a chance to act on that locally. Again, with the item number 20, we talk about the war on drugs, big federal issue, federal policy. Again, here's a chance for local government to make whatever small difference it is in that. Here's your chance to do a little bit of something on that, despite the constraints you may have legally and politically. Let's speak specifically to to the candidate or the commissioners up here who've been very unjustly drawn out of your districts, again, by the state legislator. You know, here's your chance to leave a legacy, whether you run for office again or you don't. You know, you'll be remembered as the commissioners and the body of government who decriminalized cannabis and made life just a little bit easier for the citizens of this community. You'll be remembered as the commissioners who did what you could to act bold on climate and renewable energy and put our community in the right direction. So specifically to those commissioners, I want to encourage you tonight. We've all heard the stories of the people who came up here tonight and bravely shared their personal anecdotes. This is a chance to make substantive progress and move Athens another step forward in the right direction. And I thank all of you for hearing my input and considering these comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Good evening. Just let us know your name and item to which you're speaking.
Marizuniga from Winterville. Can I give this paper out to be given out to the commissioners?
Absolutely. If you just hand it to the attorney, he'll distribute to us.
First, let me say an observation that I usually have when people of the color white come to speak on behalf of problems that are predominantly, they say, for the people of color. As you will see, a great majority were white, young people that, to me, seem to be able to afford marijuana. What you won't see here is a majority of people of color. Not even those that should be here to speak up that they've been arrested because of, you know, the crime in marijuana. I don't see that here. I know the camera's not showing it, but there's not a great majority here as usual. I've given out a piece of paper here from one of the commissioners, which I shall not say the name because I do respect the commissioners. But I find this a little bit offensive because prior to this resolution, it says, this commissioner says, hi, as in MF. Y'all, when we pass this marijuana decriminalization ordinance, August 2nd. Yeah. This is a mockery to the community, especially to the people of color. When you say, when we pass, you don't say if we pass. So I kind of wonder, what do you know that we don't know? I mean, it's not supposed to be said that it's going to pass unless the vote is taken. I mean, I would think that this would be a violation of the sunshine laws. Secondly, I think that decriminalizing anything should count with some sort of accountability. I mean, when some people have maybe anxiety or mental health, this is a perfect opportunity to have somebody get some help. We've talked about this and you've talked about this, getting people mental health and resources. I mean, I don't understand why people in a time of inflation are going to use additional money that will come out of their rent or their food to buy marijuana. You know, there are alternatives. And a lot of holistic people will tell you there are alternatives to anxiety and other issues, mental issues. So I just think this is an escape. There are actual, you know, actual physical things, like I believe Chaplain had, and I respect you very much for for your comments. There are people that need it. But there's a lot of people, and if you see the crowd that's here, it's not the people that are getting arrested, it's the people that want the business for marijuana. It's the people that just want to use it recreationally, you know? So I also want to say about the resolution to protect reproductive freedom. You mentioned something about human rights and in the resolution and my rights for my body. Well, I tell you, I don't want vaccines in my body. Can you write that in the resolution as well? It's my body. I don't want it. The other thing I don't want. This is attached to me, like some people say you have the attachment of an embryo. I also don't want this. So you know what? Please write in your resolution that this is my body.
Thank you for visiting with us.
And I'm aborting this mask. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Appreciate it very much. A little more come on up. Good evening. So let us know your name and items to which you're speaking.
All right. My name is Asia, and I'm going to be speaking to item 20 and 22. I came last time we were here and spoke a little bit about really what I do as far as with the youth. And one of the things that we really harp on is teaching them how to say no to drugs. You know, it seems that I've heard a lot today that everybody cares about black lives. But it seems that we care about black lives until it's time to abort them. Statistically, black women abort babies five times as much as as white women. And so when we talk about the body and not to discredit the public health issue or looking at abortion as a public health issue, we look at it as a life. And so those are my comments when it comes to abortion. I believe that life starts in the womb. But I also believe But I also believe that there are instances, you know, even as a couple of people have shared, where they were product of rape and, and they had to go through certain things, but, you know, God preserved their life. So I'm, I'm in full agreement that life starts in the womb. I also want to talk to that area of marijuana being a gateway drug, and I think I honor Chaplin Cole for, for her sharing just her story. And I believe that if marijuana is such a medical thing, that people should have a prescription for it. So when they get pulled over, let them pull out their prescription that, that shows that they are, they are able to, to, to use that drug. But I really don't think that that's what it's about. It's, it's a recreational thing. And if we care so much about black lives as well, I would like everybody, when you leave here today, to go down to Nellie B., ride over there on the east side on the block, and see how much addiction is affecting the black community. And here's some of their stories of, of the black people out there and how they got to the place that they were. A lot of them will tell you that it started out with them being introduced to marijuana, and that led to them going into more hardcore drugs. So I think that if, if we're really trying to impact the things that are going on in our community, we should start with some of the root issues. And it seems a lot of times that we're more reactive than proactive in teaching how do you cope with, with, with your circumstances? How do you, how do they cope with life? And how do they cope with dealing with those areas of poverty? Poverty and addiction and drug abuse are, are directly correlated. And so I think, I think sometimes we're working, we're working backwards when we say that we're dealing with these particular issues, and we're opening up a door for more issues within our community when we are, you know, just slapping someone on the wrist for these things. And even if we say that we're going to decriminalize it, I do agree with that. We need to have more classes and more resources for people who are struggling with addiction to be able to get the help that they need. Thank you.
Good evening. Just let us know your name and item you're speaking to.
Yes, my name is Lisa Walker, and I am speaking about abortion, and I am speaking about the marijuana, but I'm speaking about it with the word of God. First, I want to say, I went to prison, and I said that when I came the last time, I did marijuana. I also got an abortion that my family, I have never told anybody about. And a couple of years ago, I was speaking to a lady, and she said, "Have you ever got rid of a baby?" And I said, "Yes." She said, "Well, that was going to be the baby that will take care of you." She said, "That baby," she said, "I saw that baby in her arms." She said, "That was going to be the one that was going to take care of you." But what I want to say, how to say a fifty-nine, the Lord said, "Behold, the Lord's hand is not too short, that I cannot save, neither is it heavy that I cannot hit, that it cannot hear. But your iniquities have separated between you and your God, and your sins have hid his face from you, that he will not hear. For your hands have, your hands are defiled with blood, your fingers with iniquity, your lips have spoken lies, your tongue have mothered for persons, none calling for justice, nor pleading for the truth. They trust in vanity, and they speak lies, they conceive mischief and bring forth iniquity." And he says, "So shall they fear the name of the Lord, from the West and his glory from the rising of the sun. When the enemy shall come here like a flood, the Spirit of the Lord shall lift up his hand against him. As for me, and this is my covenant with them," said the Lord, "my spirit that is upon thee, and my word which I have put in thy mouth, shall not depart out of thy mouth, nor out of the mouth of thy seed, nor out of the mouth of thy seed, seed," said the Lord, "from henceforth and forever." We got to have God. Marijuana is not going to save anybody. I went to prison smoking marijuana. I stole. I did what I wanted to do. Guess what? I lost my mother when I was in prison. I lost a brother when I was in prison. Because I lost a uncle when I was in prison, because I did what I wanted to do, and nobody could stop me. So I say, "Get Jesus."
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Get Jesus! Get him! And I promise you, don't forget about marijuana. I did marijuana. I did cocaine. I snorted, I did crack. None of that saved me.
All right. Is anyone else here to speak this evening? All right. We are going to go ahead and begin deliberation on our items of old and new business. We're going to begin with Item Number Six, which was removed from the consent agenda, and it's the intergovernmental agreement between Athens-Clark County Industrial Development Authority and the unified government of Athens-Clark County regarding the Boehringer-Angelheim expansion.
Hi, that was me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add a follow-up to my follow-up question from the agenda-setting session. I guess a clarification, clarification of a question I had had then, because I've been talking a lot about wage floors and how median or mean, you know, salaries look good, but I'm very interested in how we're creating shared prosperity by ensuring that everyone employed by businesses we're attracting to Athens is getting paid well. And in your response, the manager's office did clarify that the new jobs being created are all at an average annual wage of one hundred and twenty-two thousand. I think it said the median was about forty-five, but these are new jobs created and not necessarily everyone who's being employed in the facility, I would imagine. I'd imagine every facility needs folks to trim the hedges and mop the floors, et cetera. And so I just wanted to make that clarification here for moving forward, we need to discuss other items like these, that, you know, if we are truly committed as a local government to shared prosperity, though that part of it may seem small, that someone with a family who might want to send their kid to D U G A or, you know, tennis camp or something like that. And so those, those things matter, too. So, I mean, with that being said, I'm happy to make a motion to approve this item. I just wanted to uplift that.
Thanks. I've got a motion from Commissioner Parker, second from Commissioner Hul. Any further input, Commissioner Hul?
Only, you know, I, I agree with the points being expressed by Commissioner Parker. I'm, I'm looking forward to moving forward on this item tonight, but I do think we need, we need to do more when we talk about workforce development and business development to address wage floor as, as much as possible in the future. I also want to express appreciation for some of the information we got regarding this question of remote work. And I, I will also say, while that addresses the question, I don't think it fully resolves the question, so I hope that that conversation can continue as well. But with that said, I'm, I'm happy to approve this tonight.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right. We've got a motion from Commissioner Parker, second from Commissioner Hul. Is there any further input from the body? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to Item Ten. This regards SPOSS 2020 Project Eight, Public Safety Vehicles, the proposed project concept and purchase of the Ford Interceptor hybrids. I'd entertain a motion regarding this item.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Hamby, any input on this?
No, just a brief comment. I know the management and our police chief have looked into ways that we can maximize some, some of our renewable energy goals and, and also meet the, meet some of the needs of, of our, of our departments. And I'm, I'm happy to move forward with, with the purchase of these, of these hybrids.
Commissioner Davenport, any follow-up?
You know, renewable energy, I know it's not a sexy topic, but these vehicles are top-rated. They've been studied for their efficiencies and their safety and the fortitude passage.
Thanks, Commissioner. Further input on this? Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor Gertz. Yeah, I'm planning to vote no tonight. I just want to take a moment to express why. I definitely appreciate that we need to give people the tools they need to do their job, and we need our public safety officials to have vehicles when they're required to use vehicles to do their job. So my concern is more rooted in the fact that we're painted into this corner of choosing between sustainability goals and safety goals that relate to things that we heard people cite at the podium tonight and that we cite in our own literature around a Vision Zero policy, where larger vehicles moving at higher speeds have a much higher likelihood of fatalities for anyone they hit in another vehicle, as a pedestrian, as a cyclist. And so continuing to transition our entire fleet of vehicles from car-sized vehicles to SUV-sized vehicles, specifically understanding that they will be traveling at high speeds frequently in pursuit, to me seems completely at odds with the fundamental of public safety. And so without seeing some kind of action by this body and/or staff to pursue an alternative to our vehicle fleet that can ensure that we have sustainable vehicles that are also smaller-sized, I don't feel like I can in good conscience support this. That is in no way a critique of our public safety staff, who I understand needs vehicles. It is a critique of this government's failing and the, maybe market's failing to balance those needs. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I, I share Commissioner Hul's concerns about the failing of the market to provide adequate vehicles for our public safety police force. You know, we have little choice but to opt for these large vehicles, which are, and they're dangerous. I mean, studies say over and over again, they're proven to be dangerous, especially when driven at high speeds. We have had multiple collisions with pedestrians and other vehicles in our police force, some of which did result in injury that this government had to pay out for. I will support this tonight because our force definitely needs new vehicles, but I would hope, moving forward, as our, as vehicles move out, I, I would hope that we would continue to seek alternate vehicles for the fleet, smaller vehicles, more agile vehicles that still have the, the top pursuit rate. And, and I'm hoping that the market will step up and provide. The market's moving very rapidly on this, so I hope that we will keep up with it and, and try and opt for those as they become available.
Manager Williams?
Yes, staff has researched alternatives, and there is an alternative, but it's not a hybrid. It's Dodge Charger, which staff would not recommend. And so there, there, unfortunately, the number of pursuit-rated vehicles out there is pretty slim at this point. And the, the Interceptor, which is what we used before the sedan, Ford is no longer making, so the SUV is the only alternative, a hybrid pursuit-rated vehicle at this time.
Thank you, Manager Williams. Any further input from the body? All right, beginning a roll call, Commissioner Hamby.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hul?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk, I appreciate it. And just a programming note, we'll go through eleven and twelve, and since it's just about the eight o'clock hour, we'll take a break after twelve. All right, Item Eleven is the ADDA Community Events Program Funding Request for FY23, an annually adopted item that supports many of the downtown activities that we know and love. And I know Commissioner Hul has a commission-defined option, so I'll turn to you for input.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the commission-defined option that's contained in the agenda. If I get a second, I'll explain.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Hamby.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamby.
Commissioner Hul, any further input, or do you just want to explain the differences between the original option?
Sure, yeah, briefly, there's ten thousand dollars added to the commission-defined option version, and the rationale for that number is that we were, there were ten thousand dollars of unexpended funds in what we approved last year for the CEP. So we're pulling that out of the fund balance of the Hotel Motel Tax Special Revenue Fund and applying it to events that were underfunded and specifically prioritizing events that are by and for people of color, kind of in accordance with our Black Lives Matter resolution, our resolution in support of the Latinx community, and our Pride resolution. You'll also see a notable jump in, in the Athens Pride number. Their request was for fifteen thousand, and the original recommendation was for thirty-five hundred, but that was, as I understand it, before the ADDA or any of us saw what Pride was this year. And so now that we know the sizable event that it was, in an effort to help it succeed, the understanding I have from the leadership of that organization, I believe they communicated with this body as a whole, is that eight thousand dollars would do the trick for that. So with that said, I yield the floor and thank Commissioner Hamby for his support.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, appreciate Commissioner Hul, and I'll just add to that. I know specifically with Pride, the amount of money we allocated for them last year was for, for a different event, which is fine. They, they, you know, I like it when people are able to, to adapt and do a bigger event, which they did. So we gave them the money for that event to this event, so hopefully this will help out next year.
Yes, and, and it definitely was a larger event than I think anybody, even the most wildly optimistic of us have before. Right. Ordinance, Attorney Drake?
Ordinance stood in, FY23, annual operating capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding to the community events program for additional events and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. Any further input? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, Item Twelve is to accept the Clean and Renewable Energy Plan. I'd entertain a motion from the body.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers, second, was it, Commissioner Link?
Yes.
And, yeah, go right ahead.
I thought she was going to say something. Oh, no, I am. I was just responding to the second. Who wants second? I, I'm anticipating strong support for this among my colleagues, but I need to make some comments because I believe this plan's so significant, and also because we have a, a nice, full audience who might not know as much about this energy plan and its background. And, and so I want to share that this is a lever that we can use going forward to do our part to slow down climate change and help Athenians both economically and health-wise. And it's also the, the follow-through of the commitment that this commission made before I came on it, when I was lobbying for the hundred percent clean and renewable energy resolution that was in May of two thousand nineteen. And to clarify for everyone, that commitment is to have the government buildings and operations and vehicles a hundred percent renewable by twenty thirty-five, and a hundred percent renewable goal for the larger community by twenty fifty. And the plan basically lays out, lays out three stages of moving forward in four areas with making our buildings more efficient and clean energy-wise, helping community members take advantage of the opportunities that come with this transition, going after some environmental strategies, and transporting, and transitioning our transportation options. And there's a big emphasis on here in equity, which is a word that's used a lot, in a lot of places. So I, I want to clarify, it's pretty simple in terms of this. It's basically making sure that lower-income people can afford to make their homes more efficient and green and economical, even if they live in apartments, and make sure that those same people get first access to green energy jobs. I worked on this before I came, but it goes way back for me. I worked on renewable energies back in nineteen seventy-eight with the Three Mile Island accident that, and, and worked on a solar, passive solar architectural experiment in the eighties. So this is a long, longstanding commitment I've made to sort of think globally and act locally. And so I'm very much, I'm here tonight with a lot of pride about this commission and the work we've done, and a special thanks to all the community advisory board who've been working on this plan for about two years, to the Office of Sustainability and the consultants at Southface and Green, Green, Green Link Analytics. Anyway, I'm very excited about this, and I hope we'll be able to pass this unanimously this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up?
Ditto.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, when I came on this commission in two thousand fifteen, I came on as a climate change activist. I, you know, I'd marched in the streets of DC and New York City with hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people. One of the first things I did on the commission was ask for a list of our publicly-owned buildings and their energy usage. And I'm very grateful to management and staff for pursuing that and, and beginning to pursue solar energy on some of our buildings, and, and that was one of those early steps with the activism that Commissioner Myers was involved in, in the clean and renewable movement. We're at this point where we have a clear path forward to do something in our community, to do our small, small part to avert this global catastrophe. The world is, it's a different place than it was twenty years, and it's going to be a frighteningly different place twenty years from now. Hopefully, we can stave off some of that frightening happenings. I mean, but it's, it's already happening. Climate change is here. It's not something that's going to happen, it is here. And hopefully, we can be an inspiration to other communities and, and do our small part to avert some measure of catastrophe. You know, every time I meet a young person, I, I feel obligated to apologize to them for the mess we've left them. And, and I'm hoping this in some way can, can be some statement of apology. apology, and some motion of amends, where we can begin to avert some crisis.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. Commissioner Devonport?
Yes, first of all, I would just like to thank staff and everybody who worked on this, but also thank this body, has been alluded to. When we first came, when I first came on, the day of inauguration, we had to sign up, took a nice little picture of the clean and renewable energy, and then thanked Myers and others who worked on our T-Spots 2020, we have an additional sustainability, and now we have this. But as one of the persons who came up to the podium stated, we need to take action now, we need to put some teeth behind this, we need to take climate change serious, seriously. I think it's absurd that people, someone would say that climate change is a joke and it's cyclical, when the reality is that, you know, even during COVID, studies have been shown that the lack of people driving in China showed a dramatic reduction in asthma attacks and medical issues, but, you know, but we need to go beyond just, you know, just from just this body, but as individuals realize that, we can take simple steps through recycling, we can take simple steps in walking. We already have an obesity issue, situation in America today, and I'm quite sure your doctor would thank you, but just simple steps that we can take to save our planet for the next generation, but fossil fuels are not renewable, solar is, so, any of those, you know, we just need to take climate change seriously. It is hot, I sweat a lot, and I would like to get back to 80-degree weather.
Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was a bit of a doomer at our last retreat with regards to climate change, in that the window was shrinking for us to address this issue, and it must be addressed at a global scale, and so while I am happy that we are doing what we can this evening, and I'm super stoked to support this plan, I wanted to just talk a little bit about why we are here, and one part of the plan that I think is really powerful but small and addresses that. So, we are here because of fossil fuel industry greed. The folks at the federal level who have the power to take action, to transform our energy economy, are heavily paid by them in form of lobbying, and they have funds available for lobbying, not just because of the profits they make at the pump, but also because of things like local governments investing heavily in their pensions into companies like that. And so, I am really glad that divestment from fossil fuels is an aspect of the plan that made it through to completion, and hope that we can make good on urging the Athens Carr County Pension Board and Deferred Compensation Boards to reevaluate their positions on fossil fuel, and the ways that the role it plays in our investment strategies for our retirees. I'm hoping that we can get moving on that sooner than later, given that I, you know, just had a kid last year, and I don't know what the weather's going to be like for him in 10 years, but it's not looking great. So, let's get moving on all of this, but particularly, let's put, let's put some energy into, energy into, thinking about the ways that we can impact that global problem that we're having, that federal solution that we need, in trying to move forward swiftly on that component.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the massive amount of public comment we got tonight. It's always good to have debate and discussion in public, and I think it's important that we are very clear that climate change is real, that the emergency is not coming, it is now, there is overwhelming scientific consensus, over 99% of papers, I think somebody mentioned this at the podium, contemporary scientific papers agree. So, there really is no debate really about the problem we're all facing, or really even the urgency. I think the debate is only, what, if anything, can we do? And the reality is that we, as a local government, can't do a whole lot compared to the scale of the problem, but I am really proud that we're doing what we can, and I hope that that will be in concert with continued movement in the community that takes other forms beyond what this local government can do, because that's going to be necessary as well to bring about the transformation we need. And the one thing I wanted to add, as a consideration for staff moving forward, is that when we're talking about what this body, what this institution can achieve in line with our goals, I hope that we will, as soon as possible, begin clearly mapping out where we're currently at in terms of 100% sustainability, so that we can begin measuring our progress toward that, because we're currently very far from it, and I think the goals laid out in that resolution are ambitious, and to be quite frank, I have a hard time imagining how we're going to meet them, but I think it would be very, I think it's imperative on us, if we're going to follow through on this plan, to see the pace of progress we're making, so we can know whether we need to be investing more or less sooner, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further input?
All right, as has been stated, thanks so much to members of the public, who've been such firm and wonderful advocates for this work and advancing even these component pieces, and thank you to staff who've been willing partners in it, and to my colleagues here. This is one more step, and we have many more ahead of us, but if we don't take them, we don't get to where we want to be. So, there is a motion on the floor, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is unanimous, motion carries. It is now 8:15, we're going to take a 10-minute break, everyone. Get fresh air.
All right, welcome back, everyone. It is still the 2nd of August 2022, and we're picking up at our monthly business meeting with item 13 on old business, which is a T-SWAS 2018 program. And this is the Prince Avenue Corridor improvements, and this is the proposed concept plan for a traffic calming and multimodal plan for Prince Avenue's pilot project. I know Commissioner Myers, you have a commission to find option for this item?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to vote on the commission to find option.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers and a second from Commissioner Link for the commission to find option. Commissioner Myers, some further input?
Yeah, still sort of recovering from part one here, but jump in here. I got some interesting information yesterday, and that's that there are 344 people living within a half mile north and south of Prince Avenue on the stretch between Pulaski and Millage. To add in the other, you know, go another half mile towards the hospital, you'd probably easily get up to 5,000, and that's not including downtown. So this is a neighborhood where there are a lot of people living. The CDO that I put together with Commissioner Link and Denson and Hool is an extension of what is being presented to us from the staff, but instead of doing the pilot for the short period from Pulaski to Barba, it's going all the way to three quarters of the way because we can't touch Millage, because it's a Georgia Department, yeah, Georgia, no, now, okay, Department of Transportation road. So this is a pilot study like the one, the first one, but it extends a little further. The point of this whole pilot study is for safety, and I think some of the people talked before, there was someone talking about the image of that in-town, you know, we're, we have grown as a city, and that is part of our in-town neighborhood, and we need to make it more of a corridor there where people can walk and cross the street and ride a bike. It's a nice flat area to improve transportation, bicycle transportation in there, and also to slow down in the cars. And that's what this pilot will do for us. And I do want to make it connected to the Clean Energy Plan that we just, we just approved because the Clean Energy Plan addresses transportation. And the way you're going to address transportation in terms of renewable energy is to transition to electric vehicles and bicycles and scooters and to encourage alternative transportation, all of which this project will do. So I'm really happy that we can put this forward and, and work on something that people have been working on in this town for years, as I'm sure Commissioner Link will address.
Follow-up, Commissioner Link?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Myers for putting this together. She really did the work on this, and her background on our, our T-SWAS committees and on Athens in Motion really like shines in this. She did extremely thorough work, and this is something that's so long overdue, it makes my head spin. As someone who's lived, you know, on the Prince Avenue corridor for 25 years and, you know, heard the pleas of my neighbors on both sides of the corridor, I lived in Normal Town for a while, and I've lived on the opposite side of Boulevard for 20 years now. People are jumping for joy over this proposal, and I really look forward to seeing it become permanent. And of course, we're going to get the complaints from drivers who fear that they have to go slower, but that's the freaking point. This is essentially a urban neighborhood adjacent street. This is, downtown is legitimately extended, you know, the ADDA barrier, boundaries have extended. This is an urban street. And there are plenty of cities throughout this nation and around the world that have enforced 25 mile an hour speed limits within their entire city boundaries, New York City, Paris. You know, we're not there yet, but we're, we're getting there. We are a vastly growing community, and we've got a very transient population of young people who are not experienced drivers and who might be used to driving on I-85. So it's contingent on us to put the physical changes to the road to assure that these people are driving safely. I'm someone who primarily gets around by foot and scooter and bus, and I will not ride my scooter on Prince Avenue. I've never been one, even, even before I had vertigo issues, I would not ride my bike on Prince Avenue. I've always been one to zigzag through the neighborhoods, and because of that, I avoid going to certain businesses, or I end up, you know, getting in the car to drive a half mile to go to Daley to pick something up because it's just not safe for me to cross Prince Avenue by my preferred mode of transportation. Hopefully, this can bring us to a point where more people will happily, readily hop on their bikes and not get in a car and not spew more greenhouse gases into the environment. And on another note, this will improve safety and very likely save lives. Roads that have been right-sized like this see a 19 to 47% reduction in crashes. They see a reduction in speeds, which means a reduction in fatalities. I feel like my mother's life was saved by a right-sized road in Chattanooga when she was hit by a vehicle turning off a road that had been recently right-sized. If that vehicle had been traveling at a higher speed, she would not have survived that hit.
Thank you.
So this will save lives, undoubtedly.
Just as a point of privilege, Chair, Commissioner Myers, I know you composed the language in the commission to find option, and I'm very supportive of the linear element of this, all the way nearly to Millage and the center lane for the duration of it. Had there been consideration given to flipping the parking area between Pope and Grady to have it on the north side rather than the south side? I know that's a special event area, you've got Taylor Grady House.
Yeah, I had that, I had the information out here to follow up on that if the opportunity arose here, because when I was putting this together, I'm trying to figure out when July 26 was, but I think it was last Tuesday or Wednesday. I guess it was Tuesday when I was working on this, and I saw in the very excellent report I got from Commissioner Assistant Manager Edwards, that there was mention of the user group meeting the next day on Wednesday, 26th, that very day, to talk about the elimination of the center, the inclusion of a center turn lane, because what had been presented to me as I was working on this was a version that had the center lane taken out. And when I looked at that, I followed up and said, well, what did they come up with? And they had said, they advised unanimously to include the center turn lane and not have it just be without a center turn lane. That required the removal of some parking spots on one side. I actually just actually called back to the manager's office and got the report from Transportation Public Works, who advised on that. And I did specifically ask them, what about taking the spots out on the south side? And they were, they came back and were like, no, that will actually make this a little bit more unsafe when we're trying to make it safer. I'm not an engineer, so I sort of acquiesce to traffic engineers and what they tell me about things like that. So that's the background on that.
Thank you, that's helpful. Commissioner Hamby?
Well, I think it's helpful, I think it's helpful, but also, you know, from the, from the standpoint of the original, the original document that was sent out on the 26th had it, had it as a, as a, as a, without the turn lane there for, for, for a bit. And that was the first item that was voted on by the user group, and that's the item I was looking at last week until I noticed your commission to find option. And, and, and I guess I would say, you know, while, while UGA does use that, there's other users for those spots there as well. Athens Land Trust certainly uses those parking spots. I'm sure Emmanuel uses it on, on Sundays as well. So I just want us to be careful. One of the words, key words, or one of the things that I took from Assistant Manager's memo last week, and why I like the memo is because it reflected that, that folks were buying into this, buying into the, to the project and buying into the pilot opportunity. Because as we've all seen, when you don't buy into it from the get-go, it's not going to, it's not going to, it's not going to go over well. So, so I don't know what the answer is just yet, but I hope, I hope as we, as we move along and collect, I hope we all haven't made up, I mean, when we get the public input, I think that's going to be important. But, you know, looking at the pilot, I guess going back to the original thing that was approved from the, from the user body, I don't know if that's something that y'all would consider or not, but I guess I could ask Manager Williams about, about the, and I have some more questions, so if y'all just, I'm talking not real coherently, I know, but so can you tell us about the safety issues that Commissioner Myers talked about as far as not having it on the other side?
I spoke with staff today, and the traffic engineers that are advising the user group and staff also pointed out that there is a shift in the lanes in this area to accommodate the parking as it stands now, and that shift is not ideal when coupled with the two pedestrian crossings on either end of this segment. So you have several things going on at one time. Staff tells me where the vehicles are shifting lanes and also coming into an area where you have pedestrians. And so of the two choices, north or south, the south would be deemed more safer by the traffic engineers.
I got you. I guess I'm going back to, what I'm referring to is going back to the two-lane configuration that Josh sent us on, on the 26th. And, you know, we've all heard Tim Griffith say, if, if you allow parking on street, it really slows people down even more. You put a big bus up there, it's going to slow people down even, even more than that. But I guess what's, what's the problem there with, with the two-lane configuration and why is that? What's, you said something to me earlier about a median being needed or something, if you could help me understand that?
Yes, I, I, I think what happened, and as I understand it, the user group had a regularly scheduled meeting, and when they took this issue back up, they wanted to have a more uniform approach to the corridor.
Right.
With the, the center lane. Now, if you, if the commission decided not to go that route and instead keep the parking there, then what staff would recommend is that there be a concrete median to prevent folks from turning left in that area. So there would be a modification that could be done.
So you'd have to go up to the red light and make a U-turn and turn around? Okay. My second question is about, about the pilot project in general, because one of the things we've learned, you know, there are a lot of users on this street. Will you be monitoring the side streets for, for, because, you know, Millage Avenue, which y'all, besides Prince Avenue, Millage Avenue probably has the second highest bike users on there, so we do need to do something to address at some point here sooner rather than later, Millage Avenue, and I know we've talked about that before.
Yes, sir.
And we also see on Millage Avenue, when it does get backed up, people do cut through the neighborhoods and create issues that, that, for the neighborhoods within there for speeding and traffic calming and such as that. So are y'all going to be monitoring this so that we don't have that same situation?
Yes, it's another great question, and that's a, that's a likelihood that if, if it does slow the traffic down, you know, we are blessed with a pretty robust road network here in Athens, Clark County, and folks will find alternative ways to go. So in anticipation of that, data has been collected in, on streets along the corridor just off. And so we will continue, folks will continue to collect that data once the pilot's put into place so that we can see the actual effect of how folks are using the side streets to, to navigate the corridor.
Okay. And one of the things I do think, and I'll stop here just after this, is one of the things I do think is key about this is, is the protection being offered. You know, I think about Hancock and how, you know, oftentimes you do see people parked in along the curb there, but, but when, when we have the buffer in this scenario, that's not, that's not possible. But so I'm curious to see how that, how that plays out and how that is received. But, but anyway, that's all I, that's all I have for now. Thank you. I do, I do hope as we move along, though, that we do get good participant, participation in, in the survey. I'm assuming you're going to put out a survey that'll be online that people can access and get participation in that from not only the folks that you talked about that live along there, it's very important that they participate, but also the users that come into town and visit us as well.
Yes, there is a robust engagement process, and I'll send out the details of that as, as during the pilot project. I, I will point out, though, I think the CDO looks to limit the pilot duration to 60 days from 90.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah, I saw that. Commissioner Hool, and then if there's no other, well, gather other input and return to Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. And echoing Commissioner Link, I do think Mayor Pro-Tim Myers deserves the, the credit for a lot of the hard work spearheading this, but I'm proud to co-sponsor it and support it, I'm excited to see it move forward. I did have a question about the data collection. Are we going to have information about when the data was collected that we're comparing the pilot program timing to? And I ask because, you know, if it was collected just recently, then we've been in a summer with far less cars regardless, as opposed to spring compared to fall, so.
Now, this, my understanding is it's collected in the spring, but I can verify that. And, and you bring up a good point, that our traffic staff knows full well the fluctuation that occurs with the student population, which is significant here in Athens, Clark County.
Thanks. And just like as a note for colleagues, that I've heard, I haven't been able to verify this number, so I don't know if it's exactly true, but many thousands more than usual students being admitted into the university this semester. So if that is true, then I think we can expect an influx in traffic on all streets regardless as a result. So it's maybe just a thing to think about when we're comparing numbers, to be prepared to see that.
Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I, of course, I'm speaking in support of the CDO and definitely also of the recommendation for us to have the center turning lane between Pope and Grady. Definitely, I'm like, we need to have the buy-in. I mean, if we were to have, say, a brick concrete thing that was there, and that is the offices of CCSD now, making it very difficult for people to get into a very busy workplace. I think, and also just definitely the consistency, it's going to be much safer if we have that lane running along that block. And outside of that, I think a lot of praise has gone to staff, and Commissioner Myers, very well deserved, and I just also want to throw out to the, the Prince Avenue user group of some very dedicated residents who did a lot, a lot of work, actually over years, bringing this all about, and I'm very, very excited to see this go forward and for it to be a success, and then for it to also inspire further road diets on other streets too.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Devonford?
Yeah, just got a question from Manager Williams. For public participation, can we use the big road signs with a link that says, you know, if you'd like to participate, or if you want to make public comments, go to this link and have that road sign maybe posted somewhere outside of maybe Daley Groceries in that little plaza area, or something like that? But just, yeah, just for the public to participate. I'm supporting this, I think this is a good idea. I like the, the road dot that worked on Baxter Street, that worked on Seaton Show's Drive. I think it's a positive for our community, but I do have that little sour taste in my mouth from Barnett Show's Road, so I'm, I look for the success. I know, I'm just, that was, it wasn't our deal, so I, but I just, I hope this thing gets successful.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I'm really happy how this process has been put forward in a, in an enlightened way, an iterative way, a pilot that can, that can be adaptable. I'm, I'm very elated about the protected lanes that will be put down through this corridor because without protection, we won't see children, we won't see commuters using bicycle lanes. The bike is the answer, and we need to be putting down these Zicel zippers on every single bike lane that we possibly can because a stripe of paint on a road is not a bike lane. So I'm really happy to see us take this step and create protected areas for children and all users to safely navigate their neighborhoods. This is really important work that we're doing here, folks, and I'm looking forward to it being a model to update all of our bicycle lanes to really make them a protected place where users feel safe and can enjoy them. Thank you.
Thank you. Circling back to Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just, I have one follow-up. I do want to clarify that the yellow lines, I talked to Manager Williams, and they're showing some level of yellow lines on one of these, we talked about it with Commissioner Hamby, that there will not be a need for yellow lines, yellow curbs in the area because there'll be bike lanes there. So just to clarify that. And I also wanted to just ask Manager Williams and my colleagues and everyone else, I mean, I think that the feedback afterwards is really important, but I think the feed, I think the- the feed, I think the education and the heads up on this beforehand is really important. So whatever we can do to get that out is through individually with our networks, but with our public information office, and even some wonderful, you know, those great signs you guys put out for the College Station crisis, you know, that are on the road, where they're saying, you know, traffic patterns changing that you see, to alert people to that coming up, so it's not a shock when that comes in. And hopefully, that'll be sooner than later, so I guess we all have to work hard on that.
Commissioner Denson. Oh, go ahead, Andrew Williams, if you had a follow-up to that.
So just two things, and thank you, Commissioner Myers. On the yellow curbing.
Yeah.
I think after consultation with the attorney's office or traffic engineers, it would be necessary, the mayor and commission reserve the right and allow or prohibit parking. So in order to implement the pilot project, if you follow, if the CDO has approved, then we would ask that you approve the ordinance prohibiting the parking.
Right.
Staff would not recommend that we yellow curb, because it is a pilot, and just have to take it back up again. We'll see how it all turns out and what the ultimate decision of the mayor and commission are. As far as the use of the signs to, the only thing I can, my immediate reaction, I'd rather consult the traffic engineers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is I don't want to do anything to influence, like, if somebody sees that and says, well, I'm not even going down there, you know, and then it starts to change traffic patterns. But that'd be the only thing, and I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, oh, just, you know, the creative thinking about alerting people before the, so they don't get into the shock mode. They can prepare themselves a little bit.
Commissioner Denson.
Yeah, and just also just wanted to give, bring up to the public that staff was able to negotiate with the on-call maintenance contractor, so that we're going to be using high build epoxy paint instead of the thermoplastic, which, if we do the extended project here in the CDO, will reduce the cost by $150,000. So I think that's just, it's a fantastic way that we'd be able to limit that funds and help the public out.
Thank you for that. I have one more question, if you don't mind, just as, very quick, and what Commissioner Denson said just reminded me of this. I noticed in, I think it was System Manager Edwards' memo, they're also using some sort of thing before you come up to the crosswalk that makes some sound. Did I see that correctly or not? Some bump, bump, rumple, rumple sticks or whatever they're called? And I say that to say, you know, I may put in a work order that right there in front of Earth Fair and some of those, some of the traffic's along Five Points, there's been some concerns about that crosswalk, but having, having something like that as you drive up would alert people that there is a crosswalk coming near you somewhere, so be on the alert. Thank you. Yeah, and we use those on Spring Valley Road, very close to where Athena Drive comes in.
That's right.
That's right. All right. There's an ordinance.
This is part of the CDO. This is the ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to parking restrictions on Prince Avenue and for other purposes. This is eliminating the on-street parking between, on the north side of Prince Avenue, between North Pope Street and Grady Avenue.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Drake. All right, there is a motion on the floor from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Link, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Commissioner Williams?
Commissioner Hamby, if I could, I think that's a good idea, and, you know, really the only thing is just the cost consideration, not just, but one thing I've learned from our traffic engineers is that you really want to make safety uniform across the county as people transit the area. They, they see it and they understand what's about to happen to them, so it's a good, good point that you make.
All right. Moving on to item 14, this is a SPOS 2020 project, the mental health recovery facility, and this is an intergovernmental agreement with our area community service provider, Advanced Behavioral Health Systems. Motion from Commissioner.
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
A second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hool, second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Hool, any follow-up comment?
Sure. Briefly, you know, harkening back to my earliest days on this commission, I'm grateful that when we were tearing out our SPOS projects, we made a priority of getting this one up front. I'm excited to see how that's yielding this opportunity for us to move more expeditiously on this project being seen through. But there is a funding shortfall on this project, which we already knew before SPOS passed, when the project budget came in under the initial proposed budget, and of course, has been exacerbated by the rising costs of building materials and things. So I just, you know, as also this body's liaison to the Advantage Board, give everyone a heads up that hopefully, sooner than later, we'll be seeing some communication from Advantage leadership after we get through tonight on how to use that ARPA funding that's been designated for behavioral health with this project and others of mine that are specifically housing-related. And I'd also like to reiterate the request that we have a work session with Advantage Behavioral Leadership, both to talk about this housing project and those ARPA funds, but also so that members of this body can be more fully aware of the really great progress Advantage staff has made with regards to direct outreach to unhoused individuals in this community, and a lot of really important housing work that they're doing that heavily aligns with our strategic plan. I think there's a lot we can benefit from if we could have an open discussion with them and hear from some of the people who are boots on the ground, and hear from some of the leadership who are planning some things that heavily align with our big goals as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up?
I guess I, Commissioner Hool probably alluded to it about the shortfall of money with the construction. Where are we exactly dollar-wise? And I think it was number 28 on the SPOS list, so where, can you give us any idea? I saw, I read it, I know they're supposed to be looking for land, and where are we in this process?
So the original request from Advantage was, and I think we, this is in the agenda item, I don't have it up in front of me, was somewhere around $11 million. And in the end, the commission and the voters approved about 5.2, 5.3 million. So the amount that they needed, and this was pre-COVID, pre-construction escalation, was double what they've actually were approved, and was understood that they would always come back and seek additional funding from other, other sources, perhaps ACC.gov. They, they have a piece of property, the Mitchell Bridge Road, where they recently purchased that from the Clark County School District, and there is a lower area that is not built upon right now, and that's where they propose to build a facility. So the property they've identified, they just recently, I think Mayor Gertz, you received a letter from Advantage requesting some additional funds, perhaps from the ARPA allocation for behavioral health or other sources, to help supplement the SPOS funds that are in, that have been purposed for this. And, and they are about to enter into formal design, but they're trying to figure out what the sources are funding so that they can better understand how much they can design.
Again, Commissioner Hool addressed that there'll probably be some conversation real soon with Advantage, which I would look forward to. And I've heard a lot about getting community input ahead of time with different things that we've already voted on. So where are, I want to, I'm going to keep it on the radar, because it seems like we, it's touch and go. I want to make sure that these conversations always includes that community benefit piece, whatever it is. I know, I know they service low-income and people in need, but we harp on this with some folk and other folk we don't. So I want to be a part of those conversations, and I would like to have upfront community input and see what a community benefit would look like, if there's any.
And just to kind of tie a bow on the prospective use of ARPA funds, one of the items at our retreat in just over two weeks will be to check in with each of those bucket areas to know what the status is of that work and what our potential partners are, including Advanced Behavioral for the Mental Health piece.
You know, there, there are other groups out there that are doing social work, psychology, psychiatry, psychology stuff, of people of color. And they need to be tied into these conversations as we move forward with mental health. And that's my point. I'm putting it out there now, so nobody doesn't know that there's a group, about 20 of them, that are doing this kind of work on a, I don't know how they're getting paid, but they're professionals, they need to be a part of this mental health conversation. We always want to talk about people of color, let's get people in color involved. That's where I'm headed with this. You have a problem with that, Mr.? Can we talk later? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any further input before I return to Commissioner Hool?
Yeah, as I've offered before, and I will, again, I'm very happy to talk, as much as anyone would like to, about this. I also really think that this body would significantly benefit from a group discussion with Advantage, and that would, of course, be a public meeting, and if there's even a way to include perhaps the Athens Black Therapists Collective or another, you know, anyone else that members of this body think need to be a part of that work session discussion, you know, I certainly think that would be merited. I, I do want to share for everyone's benefit that I think this entire project is inherently a community benefit. It is a, you know, quasi-governmental public institution, a nonprofit institution, and this project is rooted in getting people housed who are in some of the most complicated, difficult situations we can imagine, and who are chronically hearing from people all throughout different aspects of our court and justice system, as well as in the healthcare field, are people who especially would benefit from a facility like this existing. So I'm hopeful that we'll get it done.
Commissioner Thornton.
And, and I was really going to say this to my comments for later, and, but Commissioner Hool kind of opened the door. There are several complexes that people, that their, their DCA contracts are ending, their tax credits. One of them is Oak Hill, another one is off of some of the duplexes on Lexington Heights. They're getting notices now that their leases are not going to be renewed after subsidies have worn out their subsidies. I've referred people to Georgia Legal Services, because people are getting these notices and their, and their leases are not up. So I don't, when we talk about housing, we really, we're not just talking about the homeless encampment. People are going to be unhoused more, and we need to prepare for it. But if you don't know, I think another one on Fourth Street is, is ending. We need to find out what housing complexes are at their 11th hour with subsidies, because people are going to be homeless, and we don't have a resource to even direct them to, because we can't even take care of the folk that are homeless now.
And it's a good point, Commissioner. I think it's fair to say that in just a couple of minutes, when we talk about the authorization of the housing affordability investment strategy, that that will probably be some of that analysis. We've been fortunate that there have been some properties that have seen renewal of tax credit status, so they've been retained as affordable properties, but we know that's not universally true, just like you suggested with those specific ones. All right, so we've got a motion on the floor, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Motion carries. All right, item 15 is the second bond revenue financing issuance for the Classic Center relative to SPOS 2020 Project Three. Is there a motion that anyone would like to place on the floor? Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, a second from Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Hamby, any input on this?
No, sir. I just hope, I hope the project, the second bond financing works out and that we can get this moving, and hopefully we can address some of the concerns that I know Commissioner Parker's about to bring up. So, thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Nothing to add, sir. Looks like, you know, we've discussed the, you know, they need this bond to build this arena, so let's go ahead and move forward.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, as I said at this end of sitting session, I won't be supporting this item, and in general, moving forward, going to increase my criticism and debate around how this project needs to move forward, given that I, in reflection, feel somewhat naive in supporting it for the first, in the first place. They have gone, we, shall I say, they, we have not been quite satisfied with what the commitments have been around living wages. A lot of the jobs that are being produced in the private sector as a result of this project will be service sector jobs, which are low-wage jobs. We try to make the deal seem sweeter by including that provision, as well as a faint promise of other community benefits like childcare or eldercare, and have not yet secured any commitment to that. And so until those are secured, I can't comfortably vote yes on bond issuance for this project.
Thanks, Commissioner. And just a sort of workflow note from myself, I took seriously the comments that you and I think others in the community have expressed about wanting to make sure that we have both a successful civic center, including an arena, and the kind of community and employee benefits. And so I'm working on some ideas where we, I think we'll get the beautiful Venn diagram, both those things. But look for a memo later this week from the, Commissioner Thornton?
Well, I guess then I am glad that you said what you just said, because we're almost, we're in the middle of this, this water now, and we're going to swim or sink. So if you are looking into or trying to work with folk, it's so easy for us to sit here and try to figure it all out. But I do know that livable wages and community benefits were a top concern. But, and at the same time, we're talking about livable wages, we make, we need to make sure we got qualified employees, too. We need to make sure that people know how to read directions and whatever. So we always talk about livable wages, but we need to not be so one-sided. We need to have people, if they pay $22 an hour, do we have that kind of work force here? So let's not forget that also when we're making all these demands.
Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will, I will be supporting this, though. I fully support Commissioner Parker's intentions and reasoning behind not supporting this. I guess my concern is that at this point, trying to stop this, in which this, this bond issuance, the longer this gets delayed, likely the more expensive it's going to be for the community if this thing is so. But saying that, moving forward, this definitely needs to be, we definitely need to make sure that the Classic Center is actually owning up to the promises they made, especially since I've sat on meetings with other contractors, say, with, on some of the other projects they're using as part of this, and those folks have said very easily that they can very easily commit to higher wages than the Classic Center is now being willing to commit to. So I think there's a lot of, yeah, there's no excuse for us not to be able to do this. There's no excuse for people who are going to be part of this facility to be paid at least $15 an hour. And there's no excuse for us not to have childcare provided somewhere in here. So I definitely, knowing that folks at the Classic Center Authority definitely watch these meetings, I definitely stand in support with Commissioner Parker in saying these things need to be owned up to, though.
Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be joining Commissioner Parker in dissenting on this. I'm going to be honest, I'm just tired of being told, we need to do this to move it along, we need to do this to move it along, because it's part of the SPOS, and we keep raising the same concerns and not getting anything concrete captured in writing, not getting any substantive action on the things that this body has repeatedly reiterated are important, including things that were captured in the initial language of the, of the project regarding community benefit and wages. And I don't know how many different times I have to talk about what part of the MIT Living Wage Calculator we're looking at, and how many different ways I need to express that in writing and in meetings, before someone from the Classic Center can give me a rationale for why we're not doing that, instead of pretending like we are in these circumventing ways. But if Boehringer Ingelheim can respond to a request in time for this meeting with a much less intimate relationship with this body than the Classic Center does, I would think the Classic Center could as well. I'm proud that we moved forward with the IDA agenda item earlier, bringing in employers that are going to pay high wages. Service sector's never going to pay as much as biosciences, but it should at least pay enough for people to afford to live here. And currently, we're dumping ever more money into a project that I don't see any reason to believe is going to pay people enough to live here. So, thanks.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, we are committed to seeing this project forward, because the voters of Athens Clark County voted on it, so we are obligated to see this through. That said, I share the concerns about a lack of commitment to living wages and community benefits. That was part of the conversation all along in this project, and I did not support this project on the list, because I kind of saw it as a bloated boondoggle that didn't necessarily bring the community benefits that we really wanted to see in these SPOS projects. We were assured that it would bring those benefits, that it would bring good jobs with living wages, that we would have a childcare center. The Classic Center is a facility that is not accessible to probably a majority of the citizens in this community. There are high-ticket prices required for most events there. I seldom can afford to go to an event there. So, I mean, it's mostly been because of my privilege as an elected official, getting invited to events there. to events there that I've been able to go to events at the Classic Center. It's, there are a lot, and granted, it brings in money from out of town, you know, folks from other counties come into Athens to attend events, but we really need to see that it benefits the people in this community, particularly in the community which it sits right in front of, you know, it sits right across the river from East Athens, and one of the most low-income communities in our entire county. And we need to commit to making sure that it benefits those folks quite directly, not in some trickle-down, bringing in tax revenue that eventually makes its way into the community kind of way, but some real direct benefit.
Commissioner Myers? Not heard from yet.
Short and sweet. I remember, I remember being out there listening to you all have this third try for the arena, and these sort of community benefits that you all worked for. So, I will look forward to that memo. I will be supporting this this time, but I remember very clearly that those benefits that were talked about, and I'm eager to work with the mayor and my colleagues here on making that happen.
Commissioner Houle?
Yeah, just two things real quick. I'll remind everybody that, you know, you don't have to see a project through if it proves to be infeasible, and as the cost of this project continues to go up and up and up, I think an argument could be made that it is becoming infeasible, and I'm not inclined to keep finding ways if we don't hear a way for the community benefits to be realized. The other thing I'd like to share is, we had this discussion during budget talks. Hotel motel tax increased dramatically in this year's budget. There was plenty of room in this year's budget for the Classic Center to address the wage issue when there was a massive influx of hotel motel money, and they have not. And so, now it's going to be more complicated moving forward, but really, you know, we're talking about, "When's the time? When's the time?" I feel like the time was months ago at this point, so I really look forward to what you're going to bring forward to us, Mayor. Maybe that'll win me over for the next time we have to vote on something, but I am not there tonight.
Commissioner Parker?
Thank you. Last thing I'll say really quick, I made like vague allusion to being kind of naive in supporting this at first, but I actually wanted to like publicly apologize for supporting it, and particularly just being somewhat complicit in letting it float along, feeling inevitable, instead of raising these challenges earlier.
All right, Madam Clerk, we'll begin with a roll call with Commissioner Hamby.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Link?
No.
Denson?
Yes.
Houle?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody? Six yes, three no.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to 16. This is a Bishop Park Improvements project that, of course, has lots of moving components, and is in Commissioner Denson's district, and he has ably worked with staff to construct a CDO that achieves some of the aims that we spoke about in the work session. So, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Denson for a motion and description of its components.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will make a motion to accept the updated CDO that everyone should have at their desk.
Second. Looks good. All right, got a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Houle. Do you want to describe the elements of it, Commissioner?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So, I know we've discussed this some during the work session, in sense that the new Bishop Park pool was going to be slimmed down a bit when it came to its competitive lanes, and there was some concerns around that. Also, it wouldn't, the concept wouldn't have the diving boards no longer, which is definitely amenity that is popular there, and it wouldn't address the wants to have a splash pad or water play feature. Especially thanks to Assistant Manager Jones and Leisure Services and SPOS staff, we were able to work around and find a, an option, a funding option, I think, that addresses all of those items. So, adds two more lanes, adds the diving wells with two diving boards, adds spraywater fountains into the zero-depth pool entry that's there, and we'll be able to include the infrastructure for an adjacent splash pad when future funding becomes available. And able to do this by pulling some funding from SPOS Project 2016, and also in pulling $218,000 from the Leisure Services capital fund balance. Initially, that was going to come at the cost of us not being able to do some improvements over at Heard Park and Lay Park, which none of us were excited about, and again, thanks to staff for continuing to work on this, we're able to find a way that those things still will be funded this year and will move forward. So, very excited that we will have, I think, a top-notch pool with a lot of amenities that this community will love, that will serve us for at least another 45 years.
Thank you. Any follow-up? Commissioner Houle?
Just want to thank deeply my colleague, Commissioner Denson, and staff for working to pull this together. There's a lot of work that goes into pulling together these sorts of things to make them happen, and sometimes because they're not as much of a heated, passionate debate, it doesn't get as much attention, but I think this really deserves a lot of praise for pulling this off, and I'm really looking forward to turning a leaky pool into a state-of-the-art facility that's going to be wonderful for generations.
Dive right in. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, yes, thanks, Commissioner Denson, and to staff for kind of shaking out the couch cushions and finding the funds to see that we do this right. This is a really important, popular facility in a growing part of town, we're a growing community. We're going to need this bigger pool, we're going to need that splash pad, and it's better we take care of it on the front end than trying to come back, you know, five or 10 years from now and tacking it on. So, I'm really excited about this. I'm excited about the splash pad. I'm excited to participate in public input on it outside of this body when the time comes to design that, because I think that can be a really, really cool regional draw. You know, if we do this right, we can make this facility the kind of thing that people come to Athens to visit. I go to other towns, and I go to their splash pads, and, you know, I take my niece to the one in Chattanooga, and it's one of the funnest things I do when I go there, and I'm hoping that other people can experience that in their visits to Athens.
Mayor, I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So, with the budget here, 5.4 is total revenue available, 3.8 available for construction. I'm assuming the 1.2 is for some other things in Bishop Park? Is that right?
Initially, the 1.2, I believe, included the splash pad, which we removed. We brought it to 500,000.
So, where's, if there's still 1.2 out there, what's that going towards? If I'm reading this right, so you got 5.4 million for revenue, and then we're only spending 3.8. You don't have to answer me.
It's okay. Some of that cost is for design, permitting, and fees and testing, public art, furniture fixtures, equipment, contingency.
Yeah, I get that. It's all 3.8 is what it adds up to. You see what I'm saying? If we've got 5.4 in revenues, am I reading this right, y'all?
In the updated sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the original.
It's 5.4 in revenues, and then 3.8 in construction. There's at least 1.2 left over.
Maybe that's Bishop Park?
I must, it has to be for Bishop Park improvements.
Well, I was, if you take the 5.4 at the top of the memo, and you back out all those expenses, then you're left with 3.8 available for construction. So, the extra, I guess, 1.6 in this case would go towards those items there, design, FFNE, contingency, and then extra 500,000 that Assistant Manager Jones was referring to.
Okay. So, the 1.6 is all the non-construction items, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's the 500,000 in question, which is, you know, a third of that, yeah, which are part of the construction that you're wanting to add.
Okay, I'm ready. All right, I've got a motion, Commissioner Myers? End up.
Now, I just wanted to, can I speak?
Please.
Real quick. No, I'm just totally in support of this and that this has happened. Our leisure services, our programs in the facilities are what gets us through the summers, gets us through COVID, and so I'm really appreciative of this, and, you know, since I know Leisure Services is listening, I'm just putting a little shout out to these wonderful pools we have, that we might down the line consider taking one pool and leaving it open beyond the first weekend in August, and just having one pool open perhaps on the weekends, like the example of Walker Park, where we have the splash pad for another month.
Follow-up from Assistant Manager Jones, and then I'll have Attorney Drake read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Point of clarification, so as we were shaking the couch cushions, we had to pull money from SPOS 2011 Project 16, which was originally set aside for Cook's Trail. 282,000 was dedicated to Cook's Trail, which we cannot do, spoken to in the memo with 282,000. That's why staff recommends that we pull it out and put it towards Bishop Park Pool. Just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Thank you for that. Attorney Drake, can you read the budget ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for additional pool elements for the Bishop Park Improvement Project and for other purposes.
Thank you. All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and...
Can you clarify the 500,000 ordinance of the 218?
218.
218.
Yes, 218.
All right, 17, 18, and 19 are three grants for which the District Attorney's Office has applied. I think each one of these has a budget ordinance, so I'll just ask you, Attorney Drake, up front, to read the budget ordinance for 17.
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Operating and Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC Restorative Justice Grant Program for expenses related to an additional victim advocacy position, a youth restorative justice conferencing program, and associated operating expenses and for other purposes.
Thank you for that. Do I hear a motion for this item?
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Houle. Any input on this, Commissioner Thornton?
I just want to say, I think, even with the next two grant opportunities, I want to commend DA Gonzalez for taking this very bold step to help. Again, to me, this is what criminal justice reform looks like, and I think that the folk that really will benefit from this will be a part of the discussions and not just drop something on. So, I've never seen things like this coming out the DA's office. It's not punitive, it's more educational, and I do appreciate her initiative on this. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Follow-up, Commissioner Houle?
Echo all that, and I'll also say that I'm really glad to see the partnership with the Georgia Conflict Center.
Absolutely. Commissioner Myers?
I'm echoing the two of them, and just thanking DA Gonzalez and her staff for putting these together, and I'm just making my comment now for all three, because, one, they work together. You know, there's a youth, the Restorative Justice Program that's working with the Georgia Conflict Center, the, some more facilities and equipment and data management for victim services. I think that's really important. And then I really love this young woman-focused program for girls and young mothers at risk, that they'll be working with the juvenile offender advocate. So, two community programs that really are doing a lot on their own, and then working with the DA's office, I think that's just wonderful and commendable, and appreciative of that.
Thanks for that. Any further input? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next one, if you just read the ordinance for this up front, Attorney Drake?
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Operating and Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the U.S. Department of Justice DOJ Office for the Victims of Crime, OBC Technology Grant Program for expenses related to an additional part-time project manager position, a victim services application, and associated operating expenses, and for other purposes.
All right, entertaining motion on this item?
So moved.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Denson. Commissioner Thornton, any further input on this one?
I have no comment. They were all in my first piece.
Commissioner Denson, any follow-up?
I just appreciate them applying for this funding, and hopefully we get it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, moving on to 19, and Attorney Drake?
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Operating and Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the U.S. Department of Justice DOJ Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention, Juvenile Justice Grant Program for expenses related to an additional social worker, project coordinator position, and associated operating expenses to improve outcomes and reduce recidivism for girls in the juvenile justice system and for other purposes.
I move to approve. Second?
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Parker. Commissioner Link, any input?
Yeah, I would like to thank DA Depper Gonzalez for applying, for proposing this program and applying for these funds. This program is more crucial than ever in this day and age when young women and girls no longer have rights to bodily autonomy. These are girls that are high-risk for unplanned pregnancy. These are precisely the young women who will be negatively affected and have their lives at risk by inaccess to abortion and women's reproductive health services. So, I believe this program very likely could save lives. It will save lives.
Commissioner Parker?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you to District Attorney Gonzalez for filing these grant applications. Item 20 is the result of a bevy of work from our Legislative Review Committee, as well as from staff, and appreciate particularly the Attorney's Office working on this regarding possession of marijuana in local ordinance. And Commissioner Edwards, I believe you're the Chair of LRC, is correct? So, I'd ask you to introduce the item for us.
Yes, I will move to adopt the attorney revision ordinance that's in our packet.
A second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Myers. Any follow-up, Commissioner Edwards?
You know, I think this takes a great first step for this community in decriminalizing the use of marijuana. Initially, we had sought to impose a $1 fine, but after some research from the attorney found that due to some state laws regarding criminal defendants contributing to the sheriff's retirement fund, among other things, the fine has to be at least $35. So, thanks to the attorney for bird-dogging that factoid for us. So, I thank the public for coming out and sharing their remarks. I certainly was moved by several of them, and I think this is a great first step for this community, a step already taken by dozens of communities in Georgia, and is, you know, a small step on the way to where other states in this country have gone. So, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Myers, follow-up?
Yeah, I'm thankful to have worked on this in the Legislative Review Committee with our fearless leader here, Commissioner Edwards, and supporting this. This is something, you know, I think one of the hard things, I think one of our speakers came up before and talked about learning how many things we can't do at a local government, and part of that's going to come out in the discussion today. But one thing we can do is we can make ordinances on less than one ounce of marijuana, as has been done in Savannah, and Clarkston, Fulton County, Statesboro, and so forth. Right now, there happened, there was some discussion on the LRC about whether or not we needed this, because there really aren't many charges brought just solely on small amounts of marijuana possession, but as has been discussed tonight, that's because of a loophole in our laws and technology that make it difficult to differentiate between the okay hemp and the illegal marijuana. And some people have argued we don't need to have the ordinance because of that, but I was interested, and one person brought up the fact that there are some smaller handheld technology, and I don't know if that really exists or not, but I'm sure it soon will be, where people at local municipalities and police departments and their forensics can do that. And I think it's only prudent of us now that we have the will of the commission to go ahead and put this ordinance, decriminalizing low levels of marijuana, and making it with that $35 fine. Technology changes, and the political will of this body will change as people change, and ultimately, the illegal drug... And ultimately, the illegal drug use, when it is a problem, is a public health issue and not a criminal issue unless it harms others. And so while it's helping others, I think in those cases as well, which is clear from tonight, it's just one more reason why we need to get this ordinance passed tonight, so I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Thornton, and Commissioner Denson?
I will not be supporting this. Working with the Solicitor's General for five years on records restriction, which was the first initiative on criminal justice reform, and then the Solicitor's Office moved to not prosecuting small amounts of marijuana. Now, the District Attorney is also not prosecuting small amounts. The ordinance does not include UGA police or State Patrol police. So that's a big gap, and I don't understand why public safety people are not talking to each other. I don't know. After hearing so much input from speakers tonight, and I learned so much tonight, I came in here with really, a really hard, hard-onness. I'm a little softer now, even though I'm still going to vote no. Where is the community education? We got so much education tonight, and the folk in the community don't know the stuff that we heard tonight. According to Attorney Donnelly, the jail remains full and the criminal court sub-ism. We have an opportunity to help empty and take action those jails by getting these folk tested, getting their records restricted, and helping them with their basic needs so they don't have to depend on alcohol or cigarettes, as many had mentioned, and comparing one bad thing to another bad thing. I totally don't get it. And I do disagree. Marijuana is a gateway to other drugs. Maybe not for everyone, but for too many. While I've learned a lot from many of the speakers, it seems others need to be educated with options before I can support such an ordinance. I think it's going to be a great opportunity to educate. I hope some of the speakers that spoke will take their message to the churches, to the recreation centers, to parents, helping them to understand the difference. But I'm just not quite ready to support this. I was, like I said, I came in here one way. I was moved by many of the speakers, especially after dealing with a situation with a very close friend of mine in Cobb County. But I need a little bit more, and if somebody would take the time to educate instead of push things on folk, or me, maybe I'm just a little slow. So no, I'm not supporting this tonight, but thank you. And Clerk Spratlin, I know you do not take minutes, but I do want my comments to go on file in your records, so I don't get misquoted by media and the newspaper. I want this on file. So it's not that I'm opposing it for any... you know, I want it on record.
Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do support this, and it was unfortunate that we learned the information that of the thirty-five dollars. I did have a question for the attorney, if it would be possible for us to have the wording in there of shall be punished by a fine equal to the minimum amount required by law, but not to exceed thirty-five dollars? And the reason I asked that is that I... looking at, like, there is a number of areas that these fines have to go to. You have the Sheriff Retirement Fund, County Law Library Fund, Peace Officers' Annuity and Benefit Fund. But then when I looked at... I looked at one of them, like, the County Law Library Fund, it says a sum not to exceed five dollars may be charged, which it sounds like that one's not necessary. So I would kind of hope that we could go through and get it down to the absolute minimum amount that was necessary, but again, not to exceed thirty-five dollars.
Well, it was my impression thirty-five dollars was the absolute minimum.
Yeah, I was going to say, we got this communication from... We got this communication from the Clerk's Office, and we inquired about whether we were required to require Lisa Lowe and Judy Clay, because actually Austin Jackson, our office, thought about this, because he was a former prosecutor, and there's being these minimum fines. So we inquired, we actually reached out on Monday yesterday to make sure, and we got a response that says, yes, if there's a fee... Yes, there are fees that have to be broken out, Sheriff Retirement, Law, Library, POAB20, et cetera, then it has to be a thirty-five-dollar fine. You know, I don't... My concern is that what you're saying is you're... you know, they're indicating Law Library is required. And so I don't... I don't want to get in a situation where we're trying... Ordinances need to be exact, you know? And so they've told us that, the municipal clerk has told us that. I think we should honor that, and then maybe if we figure out there's not, then amend it. I just don't want to get in this situation where we have this unclear ordinance.
Okay, sure. I hear you there. Okay, thank you. But yeah, otherwise, I definitely am very much in favor of supporting this. I mean, it's been at least ten years that I know of that people have been coming, and I appreciate the folks coming out here tonight. I know members sitting on that side of it, good ten years ago, and people coming out and organizing around this, trying to get a parallel ordinance very similar to this happening. And it definitely... while we might not be prosecuting right now, currently, it definitely saddens me that over those last ten years, people definitely were prosecuted, and people's lives were negatively impacted. And I want to take whatever steps we can right now to make sure that ceases, no matter who is the solicitor general, no matter who is the district attorney, no matter what the state legislature does when it comes to differentiating between hemp and marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions, and then I may have a motion. My first question was just to clarify, Attorney Drake, if we say, if we use the phrase "no more than thirty-five dollars," that would still allow thirty-five, right?
Yeah, I think no more than...
That would allow it to be less if we find...
No more than thirty-five, I think, is fine. That's a direct amount. That's similar to what... how Making Bib says, no more than up to seventy... I might say... theirs says up to seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just didn't like the uncertainty about, I'm trying to argue with the municipal court judge about what is put on.
Sure. And then I had some questions for...
If we determine that, we can amend it for some reason, but I can't imagine they're doing it incorrectly, you know? But it could be.
And then I had a few questions for, I believe, the manager, and I regret that this didn't come up sooner. It was actually, it took someone from the press reaching out to me on Friday that got me realizing this is worth digging into. But does our current policy regarding drug testing employees apply to marijuana and/or hemp?
It does.
Okay. And does the methodology for testing that is used distinguish between hemp products, which are legal in Georgia, and marijuana, which is still criminalized?
Yes.
It does?
Yes. Both hemp and CBD products are unregulated, and if there's sufficient THC, a user would test positive.
Okay. Now, if a user... because legalized products still have a residual amount of THC, if someone were using, say, CBD oil every day to deal with their anxiety or something, could that push them over the level?
Possibly.
Okay. And does the testing have any way of indicating how recently the substance was used? I ask this because... no, it doesn't, okay. Because my understanding is testing can... you can show a positive test for usage a month prior, and it wouldn't have anything to do with the state of mind you were in that day you were at work, so... Okay. And I guess the last question for y'all is, if this proposed ordinance passes, is there any plan... is there any anticipated effect on our policy regarding drug testing employees changing as a result of this ordinance?
At this point, it does not appear so.
Okay. Okay, so with that in mind, I have a motion, and then maybe a couple remarks upon it. But I'd like to move to amend the original motion to include the three whereas clauses on the first page of the CDO, and then also to amend the language of Section C to say "no more than thirty-five dollars."
Could you read those three clauses for me, Commissioner Hul?
I certainly can. Whereas the mayor and commission wish to discourage the use of criminal penalties regarding the offense of simple marijuana possession and provide for civil alternatives. And whereas the mayor and commission find that enforcement of the state laws prohibiting simple marijuana possession has been inequitable and has fallen disproportionately on certain subsets of the population. And whereas arrest and/or conviction for the state law offense of simple marijuana possession presents employment obstacles which marginalize broad swaths of the population.
So you include those three clauses, as well as the up to thirty-five rather than simply the standard thirty-five?
Yeah, no more than thirty-five, yeah.
Oh, second, do I need to for an amendment of a motion?
Yes.
Or does it need to be... okay, okay, gotcha.
So I guess whenever... I have a couple more things to say, and then, you know, we'll vote on the amended motion and then the original motion. So my original CDO also included some language around probable cause, and I understand that there is not currently sufficient support in this body to include that part of the proposed commission-to-find option in this, which is why I'm not choosing to introduce that as well, because I'd like to see us find a way forward on that, perhaps in the future, ideally the near future. I think there's more work to be done to maybe do that in a more thoughtful and even perhaps more effective way, addressing a lot of the root issues that I think people have spoken to eloquently tonight and for many weeks and months and years prior to tonight. I also wanted to address briefly this concept of gateway drug. We keep hearing people call marijuana a gateway drug, and I think that that is misidentifying the starting point of people's troubles. And it condemns their choice of how to cope or heal using a substance rather than speaking to the underlying systemic or community failings that cause people suffering in the first place. And so I think it's very important, when we talk about substances that people use, and we have certain ones that have been criminalized because of a racist war on drugs, that we recognize that it's not helpful to criminalize the act of using a substance or to refer to that act as somehow the start of someone's problems. Even people who are struggling with addiction find themselves in situations where they might turn to that as part of a problem, but that is not the initiation of their problem. You don't wake up one day, smoke a joint, and suddenly have all kinds of trauma. You have all kinds of trauma, and then you seek ways to find refuge from that trauma. And some of those ways have been criminalized by a problematic system that we're doing our best to address, so...
Commissioner Parker?
Thank you. I just want to speak generally to the topic of decriminalization, first by speaking about the drug war. I was glad... well, really, for everyone who came out and spoke tonight, particularly those who echo some pieces of history I've brought up previously about the origins of the drug war. But most particularly of the speakers, Mrs. Walker, who came and spoke about her impacts, among many, you know, folks with criminal justice interactions around this issue. But that very powerful testimony about the impacts of criminalization on her life, that she was not able to be there when her mother passed away, is something that I think that our government at some point needs to apologize for, our role in, because the war on drugs has torn apart a lot of families, a lot of families. And if we are to address some of those root causes that are driving people to abuse dangerous substances, which I would not qualify marijuana as one, we do need to have that lens to that work of thinking about the treatment that folks brought up with regards to, you know, coping with not only mental health struggles, but, you know, if they're turning to substances a little too recklessly, how can they... how can we help with that? In one of the items we just passed from District Attorney's Office, they identified several risk factors for young women of becoming involved in the criminal justice system that we can tackle in the front end, so that the problems perceived around drug use are actually cut off at the root. I was very pleased by the robust discussion we had last December around the drug war, particularly the commitment from some of y'all to invest in some of those things that scientists agree do actually prevent folks from becoming criminals. But we do need to acknowledge the fact that the victims of the war on drugs are owed reparations, and that this tonight is just a first step, and it is not enough for a lot of the reasons that Commissioner Thornton raised as well. I would like to see us pass stronger action that does take probable cause into consideration. We did receive some counsel from some of the great folks, students for sensible drug policy this evening, who recommended some stronger language that we may be able to pursue in future. I would certainly love to see that. And with that, it's crazy that four years, we're finally here. So with that, I would be happy to get this passed.
All right, so as a procedural matter, we'll take action to amend the original motion, beginning with the suggester of the amendment. Commissioner Hul?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 All right.
A yes, one no.
All right, amendment carries eight to one. All right, everybody ready to vote on the underlying ordinance?
I'd actually just kind of like to take a second and explain to folks what's happening in case, because we all found out about the thirty-five dollars thing very recently. I don't know if the public is fully aware of what's going on with that also.
Yeah.
I could also pass it over to the attorney if you'd like to explain.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
We communicated with the municipal court's office, because, as I stated previously, one of the attorneys I always got... we got to thinking that perhaps there are these mandatory surcharges for criminal offenses, and whether we... just to make sure, whether we need to include those. And so I reached out to... I just mentioned whose name we sent the email to, and they responded that yes, there has to be a thirty-five-dollar minimum to cover those different surcharges. And so that is basically what happened. And...
So here I am.
And so thus, the dollar fine is not an option, given our state requirements.
Yeah.
So, and I think that that probably parallels a lot of the discussion we've had, which is that, you know, we are in many ways hemmed in by state and federal activity, and I trust that everybody who's an advocate for this, and certainly everybody in this room and watching this broadcast, will also be an advocate for those changes on the state and the federal level that we see, including reclassification federally. Commissioner?
Thank you very much, Attorney Drake. I thank you for giving that context. I also wanted to add the detail that the fines have to be paid into the County Law Library Fund, the Sheriff's Retirement Fund, and the Peace Officers' Annuity and Benefit Fund. And I bring this up because I think it's an example of how the prison industrial complex actually needs crime to sustain itself. I appreciate that Mayor Gertz brought up advocacy at the state level for making some of those changes, but there are ways in which we do the same thing in our community. We bank on money from fines in municipal, state, and superior court in order to balance their budgets, and we also depend on five million dollars, more or less, of the unpaid labor of captive descendants of slaves to balance the city's budget. And so there's things that we can also do here to reverse that trend of criminalizing people so that you can make money from them.
Commissioner Hul?
We still need to vote on the main motion.
We do need to vote on the main motion.
And I need to read the ordinance.
And so, yeah, just read the ordinance now, and then we'll go ahead and get the last two bits of public input.
An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to possession of marijuana and for other lawful purposes.
All right, Commissioner?
Thank you, Attorney Drake, and thank you to you and your staff for the work you've done to literally try to help us get where we need it to be today, all the way up through to the meeting. I do want to share that I'm still glad to support... I'm dismayed that we can't do a dollar, but I'm still glad to support this, because the function of it is essentially the same. The rationale for the dollar, now the rationale for thirty-five, is to remove that revenue generating motive from this, and so there will be, you know, no revenue generated to the local government through this. And for that reason, yeah, making this the lowest we can, I think the rationale still hopefully achieves some of the outcomes that we're hoping to achieve with that low amount. And as far as I understand it, that will still make us the lowest fee of any community in the state, so...
Commissioner?
I'm going to just... I'm sure this will pass, but I do want to reiterate, if our jails are full, especially those that are in there for drug offenses, we need to find a way to empty out the drug... you know, empty out the jails, and if they're there for... Because we can't move forward when we still have people left behind. And I'm just taking that from Attorney Donnelly's letter, that if they're full, and if it's related, if we're serious about this marijuana ordinance, we need to backtrack and try to help those that are in jail or incarcerated because of a drug incarceration.
Commissioner Myers?
Just a real quick thing, because I... no, it's quick again, but I pulled up how many people were in the jail today, and then sorted by offense, and I was surprised at how few people were there, had a drug offense listed. There were many other assaults, some of which are... you know, there's a lot of people in the jail right now, there's over four hundred. But I was surprised at the small number that were connected, had a drug offense listed.
What was that small number?
I don't know, I have to bring it up. I wasn't ready to go...
Oh, well, don't bring it up if you...
It's like ten or something.
No, 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 don't bring it up. No, 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 don't bring it up.
And none of them, none of them were just for marijuana, so...
Okay, okay.
None of them were just marijuana, it was higher level.
It was something else that went there.
Yeah, 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 there were no, there was no one there listed for marijuana possession.
But I'm still not going to change my stance on this. If we got a jail full, we need to figure out how to empty the jail.
Yeah, empty the jail.
I think everybody's...
That's the way to empty the jails, to not put them in.
Think everybody's ready? We've got procedural activity. Attorney Drake, I appreciate you reading the ordinance. We've got the motion from Commissioner Edwards and second from Commissioner Myers, do the roll call for us. Clerk Spratlin?
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Heck, yes.
Eight yes, one no.
All right, thank you all, I appreciate that. Motion carries. One, one small step, again, there's a lot of work ahead. All right, item twenty-one is authorization of the housing affordable investment strategy. I entertain a motion regarding this item.
Some move.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Link, any input?
Yes. It's about damn time. This is, this is something that we probably should have invested in ten, fifteen years ago, considering we're a growing community with a rapidly growing university. We are in a crisis, a housing affordability crisis. We are, you know, among the top cities in the nation for housing disparity. And I want to thank Mayor Gertz for making this a priority and implementing the committees that needed to be implemented and steering us in the direction, you know, to utilize these federal funds. And I'm hoping this strategy can move forward quickly and, you know, it's a snail's pace, but, you know, we're at least starting down that road. There's a lot of people in a lot of pain right now because they can't afford the rent, they can't find a home, they're living on the streets, and it's, it's rough, it's super rough. It's unfortunate that this has not, was not a priority of a previous administration, but we're getting there now.
Thornton, Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up?
I was jumping in there to make that motion, at least got it in a second, because I really feel very strongly about housing. I talked to Assistant Manager Jones this morning, I shared my concerns about having to go out and bring in somebody, but if this is what it takes to make it happen, I think one of the partners for H and R, A and S, whatever, he has worked with Enterprise, which is very, very knowledgeable about housing issues. So I felt much better about that and gathering that information. I think that on the horizon, just like we're talking about the horizon of the ordinance, we are going to have a boatload more people looking for housing. So whatever we need to do, we need to do it like yesterday. If, if, if this is the way this board wants to think, proactively, so I definitely support this, looking forward to working with them, I feel good about that relationship that they have with Enterprise. There's another national organization, National Coalition on Low Income Housing, hopefully we'll get to use as a resource. But we're, we're sitting on a time bomb right now, as far as housing is concerned.
Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on some questions I raised at the agenda setting session with regards to community engagement. I think, assuming this was Assistant Manager Jones over here, talked about the fact that the firm was from out of state, and so that raised concerns for staff as well. But they are planning on engaging an advisory committee that will sort of determine the shape of the community outreach, which is very heartening to me. I will say that the plan to leverage the local presence of the neighborhood leaders program might be something we should think about more, given they have a lot to do. We kind of like, put a lot on them, because they are very community rooted, and like, their job is somewhat to get information out there. But something I'm definitely excited to continue talking about. I also wanted to highlight that, without going over the current, the maximum project price, there was additional money added to ensure that the community engagement process is really robust, knowing that that's really important to us. So I just want to highlight that to the public in terms of how this firm that has expertise broadly, but might not know Athens super well, is planning on going about ensuring that folks are included in shaping this plan up. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport?
Yes, I want to just piggyback off of Parker and especially Link. Link hit the nail on the head. Had we done this years ago, the housing crisis in Athens would have been, would have the housing crisis that we're currently facing in Athens would be less dramatic than it is. And I do like the fact that we are reaching out, or the consultant will be reaching out to people in the public for input, so this is a good step forward, and I thank everybody involved.
Commissioner Denson?
Commissioner Parker hit on the points I wanted, yeah.
Mayor, I have something to say real quick. I don't know if somebody else's hand was up before mine.
Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm looking forward to what this group will do for us and help us come up with something. I do hope though, I know that y'all are talking about this on the Affordable Housing Committee, I do hope though, that I still keep hearing about, you know, when we talk about affordability, the construction costs that are a result of our policies, like stormwater, like, like parking, minimums, and such as that. So I think, you know, I'm hoping that, because if it costs more money to build, it's going to be passed along to the person who is buying it. So when you talk about, you know, a stormwater system that's very highly engineered, that's very expensive, because they know they can, if it's highly engineered and very expensive, they know they can get that through our planning staff and planning commission and whoever else. But I'd be interested in comparisons between what we require in stormwater versus what somebody like in Macon requires in stormwater. Because I just, you know, I'm just curious to see if what we're doing is adding to the cost of, of building homes. I'm hearing that, and I just need to find out if that's, if that's true or not. But I also hope that they're looking at, I noticed in here, the county's low-density land use patterns, and that's true in some areas, but I'm hoping that they'll also look at opportunities where we can redevelop areas, especially along some of our corridors, where people have access to grocery stores and corridors that are, that are walkable. I want us to be very cautious about, I always hear this, talking about building in the greenbelt. You know, that greenbelt is a jewel for our county. That greenbelt is something that brings people to want to live here. I don't want us to forsake what has brought people here and what brings people here because, because of that. And we just passed this renewable energy thing, and the greenbelt helps with that. So, you know, I'm looking forward to what they're, to what they come forward with, but those are some of the things I've been thinking about as we move along with this.
Just wanted to respond real quick. We're actually taking up that issue about stormwater and other sorts of ACC policies that increase construction costs tomorrow morning at ten a.m. at the planning department, if you want to come. We're actually having some...
Send me the Cliff Notes.
But, yeah, maybe we can empty the jail like you just said, and then redevelop and house it, let me know.
Well, yeah, we'll have developers actually present here, telling us what those hindrances are. And of course, the missing middle scan talks right to that too, about trying not to build into the greenbelt, but building on those corridors that are already walkable. I mean, that's the whole point of the missing middle scan, so I think we'll, we're moving in the right direction.
Okay. We'll get Commissioner Hamby the real remix. Commissioner Edwards?
I just, I agree with what's been said, we need to preserve the greenbelt, we need to be focused on building in our urban corridors. And, you know, I'm happy to see that we're doing this, but I think, you know, the changes that this entity is going to recommend we make behind the rail right here are going to be tough decisions and votes for this body to make. Things like parking minimums, you know, sometimes I feel like a traffic commissioner, the amount of time I talk about car storage and cars and car, every meeting, we're sort of spending like hours talking about cars. So, you know, talking about altering our car storage minimums, like Commissioner Hamby said, talking about accessory dwelling units, changes to our zoning to densify our urban core, those are hard votes that need to be taken. And a lot of those ideas are ones that we've had for a while. So I'm glad we're hiring this person, I think they're going to probably tell us the same things we've maybe been trying to get the courage up to do. But, you know, I'm not going to be around here much longer, so somebody's going to have to make those votes.
I think those are fair points, Commissioner. I think the benefit of this is, you know, we're going to have this bolstered by a rich set of data and comprehensive analysis, rather than sort of working on an ad hoc basis. And so I think it is that kind of full menu that we'll have at our disposal through this work. Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just piggybacking on what a lot of colleagues are saying, and I'll say, the things that we have been considering a long time, that are already well researched, I would encourage my colleagues and the mayor for us to maybe act on some of those things without wasting, you know, this entity's time exploring things we've already run the rabbit on, things like accessory dwelling units, I think we can just act on. So I would, I would encourage us to maybe do that as soon as possible, to better utilize the work that this organization is going to do. And the other thing I'd just like to share is, I would love to see some language captured in whatever we're getting from them, about use of a land bank authority and an approach to housing that we might broadly refer to as social housing. But, you know, there's a lot of models that exist in other countries that I don't think were prohibited from doing something akin to here, that, that might make some, some dent in the affordable quality housing crisis that we're talking about.
All right. Oh, Commissioner Thornton?
And, and as we move forward, I hope this body is willing to put skin in the game for housing. I didn't realize until months, months ago, when Manager, Manager Williams gave, gave me a list of the properties that we own. And we own a lot of property, y'all. And some, and it's not just these buildings downtown, we own properties that have infrastructure. Some of them are labeled conservation, some of them are flood zones. But if land is the problem, we may need to look at what we own, and I do agree about the, the land bank authority. So sometimes you got to put skin in the game if you want, if you want a good outcome.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? All right, great job, everyone, really looking forward to this work. All right, item twenty-two is a resolution to protect reproductive freedom and abortion access in Athens Clark County, and I believe, is it the case, Attorney Drake, that there is some slightly amended language, is that correct?
Well, Commissioner Denson has... Along with Commissioner Hul, Myers, and Parker have proposed CDO.
That includes the amended language.
That includes...
That includes your amended language, all right. I'll begin with Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, I'll make a motion for us to accept the, the CDO.
Got a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Link. Commissioner Denson, any further input?
Yeah, just to give some explanation on the CDO. Here in the, this, it takes almost verbatim in section two, the language from the Atlanta ordinance that was passed a month or so ago. And this does address some of the, the legal issues that I know that our, our attorney's office was, was concerned about, specifically around requiring police officers to violate their oath if they were being forced to. So while this goes, this goes ahead and talks about how we want to have our funding used and such, it does leave the opening for officers to still be able to do their job as, as they see legally necessary, but still limits explicitly any funding being used to enforce these, these laws. It also incorporates a section five, which states that it is, it is the policy of Athens Clark County, the ACC GOV will not participate in any state, federal, or private grant program with the intent to investigate or support the prosecution of any allegation, charge or information relating to the outcome of a given pregnancy, including abortion or abortion-related care. Just with the, the understanding that this has already been happening in other places, being discussed about grant programs trying to incentivize local governments to do this. And I believe that is all of the, and there was a couple of other specific legal changes that were put in there too, but...
Commissioner Link, a second, any follow-up?
Yes, I just want to point out a couple of lies that were told at the podium by members of the public who chose to, chose to read scripture as a means of deterring us from passing this ordinance to protect women and people with functioning uteruses. This country was, there is a clear separation of church and state, it's in the Constitution. This country was not founded on religion, so that should have absolutely no bearing on any decisions regarding abortion, as far as, as local ordinances or resolutions or anything like that goes. And also, I would like to point out that Benjamin Franklin, an architect of our Constitution, actually included recipes for abortion in one of his helpful hints books that he published. The founders of this country did not take their clues from any higher power, any god, any religion, and they also recognized a woman's need to end a pregnancy. So anybody who turns to, you know, some imagined mindset of our founding fathers, or any, any will of any god, as a means of discouraging a woman's right to choose and a right to bodily autonomy, is relying on lies.
Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight a part of the whereas section that I think is really important, in which we as a local government hopefully will affirm our support of reproductive justice, which means the freedom to create the families of our choice under the conditions of our choice, including not only access to abortion care, but access to quality housing, healthcare, childcare, and jobs with thriving wages needed to support healthy families. Because we also want people who desire families to be able to do so, and to do so with dignity. A lot of folks that choose to end abortions, or in, excuse me, end pregnancies, do so because they're already parents that can't afford to have additional children, because they can't pay for childcare, because they can't get housing quality enough for, for those children, because they can't get living wage jobs. And so I look forward, as we continue our work towards actually uplifting reproductive justice, to doing that part that has been missing from the equation all along, of supporting folks in creating whatever kinds of families they choose.
Commissioner, Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Hul?
Believe it or not, I, I'm going to support this. But to say somebody lied because they shared their experience is, is unacceptable. I just, I shouldn't be shocked, but I am. The reason I'm supporting this, I was around when a lot of you probably weren't even thought about, when Roadboat versus Wade was really in the hype. I have two friends, both had to go backdoor abortions, and one was sterile afterwards. She ended up, years later, years later, she died of cancer, but she always felt guilty about that backroom experience. People spoke tonight out of compassion, and they spoke where they came from, and they spoke their experience. We vote, a lot of the things we vote on is our experience. And to categorize folk, to me, is very, very malicious. Just because your faith is not the same as somebody else's faith, it doesn't mean any, you know, one is wrong and one is right. The other reason why I'm voting for this, God gives us choice. That's one thing God gives all of us, is choice. And that's what this, this reversal does, it takes choice away. But we all going to have to give accountable to somebody someday. Now, I know some of y'all don't believe that, but I'm supporting this because God supports choice. If, and I don't think that abortion should be birth control. I don't think people should just, oh, I can go over here and have an abortion, have a good time, no. But I'm, I'm really kind of dis, I shouldn't say I'm, I'm not surprised, but people broke their heart out to that, and to accuse them of lying? I'm going to support this, but I... them of lying? I'm going to support this, but I surely do not want to support it because I don't want to be aligned with how you have spoken about people. But I'm going to support it, because I don't think that the government should come in and tell people what--for me, pro-life, take care of the children and foster care. Take care of those kids in the jails. I'm concerned about the babies in the womb, and I'm concerned about the babies outside of the womb. You talk about it, but you don't back it up. That's another reason I'm supporting it. When people--I'm sorry. This is just too emotional for me. But I am supporting it. I'm going to keep my composure. But I do not want to think I'm supporting it because of what my fellow commissioner just said.
Commissioner Hul, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight to speak. I think one of the things that we did was to show, we have a process here where everyone has an opportunity to speak, and we listen, and we take what's coming in, and we evaluate. And that's, you know, our public comment went on for a long time tonight, and sometimes it was, is a little exhausting, but it is so important for us to be listening to what people have to say and to giving them their attention. Because, you know, I knew how much, no matter what point of view, when I got up there, I was always a little bit nervous speaking. So I thank everyone from all points of view. And I do want to clarify for people that, as a commission, again, we have limited power to address state laws that we disagree with. It's important for me, for us to make this, pass this resolution, because people who feel like their rights and choices have been taken away feel very trapped and unsupported. I don't know, every time I look at the, there are, you know, visual maps showing where you can get legal access to abortion, and it's pretty scary to look at. And so this resolution does not do as much as I'd like it to do. There was one speaker who talked about it as if we were able to make abortion legal here in Athens, and that's not the case. The Supreme Court has made a decision, and that decision is, the decision on abortion is up to the states. And ultimately, if we want any changes here in terms of abortion, reproductive health, that's something that's going to be going on at the state level. I'm glad we have this here. I'm glad we can do something or other. Again, this is what I started fighting on 35 years ago, 40 years ago, before I came here and was the first thing I was involved in. So to see this up here and have to address this again is just really unbelievable. So I'm glad we can do what we can do here to represent the plight and the struggles of so many right now and the disillusionment that some people are having. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking my colleagues, Commissioners Myers, Parker, and Denson, as the ones who really spearheaded this. I was very glad to do what I could to help support in the initial drafting and the redrafting of this. But the truth is, the three of y'all deserve the credit for doing a lot of this. I was making minor contributions where I could from afar, and so your leadership is deeply appreciated. And I also want to thank staff's diligence in engaging multiple drafts of this to get us to where we are today. We are blessed and cursed by living in interesting times, and these moves being made toward forced incubation and forced birth are deeply troubling. And the change that needs to come exceeds the function of this body. You know, I'm proud to pass this, but I don't think we should pretend like this is going to make Athens function the way other states do, the way Vermont does, where they're, you know, inviting people to come on camping trips if they need it to take care of their healthcare needs. And so, you know, people who have shown up to advocate tonight, I think, deserve a lot of the credit, too. And really, a lot of the work that is going to keep people in this community safe and to move things in a better, healthier direction for this community and this country is not work that is electoral or policy-based advocacy. It's direct action work that's going to need to be done to, at least in the short term, keep people safe. And so I just want to thank people for that work that I understand is already happening, and it really exceeds what this body can in any way meaningfully contribute to. I did want to share one thing about the language of this, Section 4, which regards the healthcare policy. I do think this dovetails well with the discussion we're having around our healthcare policy as relates to the Human Rights Campaign's Equality Index. And I hope that staff will take seriously that when we talk about trans healthcare, you know, as the language of this resolution also speaks to, people of all genders can get pregnant. There are actually very high rates of trans men suffering sexual assaults that lead to them being impregnated. And one of the most important reasons for us to pursue a healthcare policy that accomplishes the things HRC is seeking us to accomplish is to ensure that people who suffer excessive amounts of trauma are not further re-traumatized by a lack of access to basic healthcare. And so I hope that that will be taken seriously with regards to Section 4. Thanks.
Commissioner Edwards?
I recognize that some emotions have run high on this issue. And, you know, I'll thank, I'll thank some of the public who came here tonight. Because, you know, we serve in this role. We all grow used to the sort of public attacks or slights made against us. But to have a member of the public who previously ran for mayor to come to the podium, proudly claim that she's unvaccinated during a public health pandemic, and then throw off her mask onto the ground for, I guess, somebody to pick up, staff or somebody. I mean, how freaking crazy and stupid was that? I mean, in this county, I don't--littering? I mean, but seriously, what is that? So, you know, I appreciate all of the public who came here tonight and spoke from the podium, but not that one person who threw garbage behind the rail. You know, let's have some standards of decency in this democracy.
All right. We do have a motion on the floor, a second. I believe Commissioner Denson made the motion, so we'll begin a roll call. Madam Clerk, with Commissioner Denson.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Devon Poit?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
None, yes, zero, no?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Last item of old business before we consider some new business under suspension of rules and planning and zoning is acceptance of a University of Georgia contribution in support of our downtown public safety camera system, enhancing a program we have in effect. Entertained a motion regarding this.
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Myers?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Thornton. Attorney Drake, the ordinance, please.
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia through the University of Georgia for the downtown Athens Public Safety Camera System, an improved lighting initiative, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. Commissioner Myers?
I'm just supporting this as it's laid out here. I don't have much to say. I'm really glad that our local community police department is working with the University of Georgia, and they're working together to work on making our downtown safer for all, for students and others.
Second.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hamby wisely could nap there for a while. Commissioner Thornton?
I'm trying to stay quiet over here.
I'm glad that we have a second bite at this apple. I think maybe this is a way that we can rebuild our relationship. But I support public safety cameras for the good of Athens, not just UGA students.
Commissioner Parker?
Yeah, real quick point of clarification, I think. So this is a partnership between the University of Georgia and the Athens Clark County Police Department. The university is also the workers at the university. Half of the black full-time employees of whom make less than a living wage, and it would really be great with our, for the safety of our community if they were paid enough such that their kids didn't break into Russell's storefront to steal bags because they don't have any allowance money. The university is also the faculty, many of whom in the social work department, such as life, who works with trust and community, understand that youth development makes our community safer. It also includes folks in the Department of Public Health, such as those with the Athens Wellbeing Project, which have identified public health factors which are making our community less safe. And I know you all know this. I know you all know that property particularly produces crime. And I will just articulate now that I would love to see all in our community, the university included, partner with us in addressing public safety holistically by investing in those things. For example, tonight, we just discussed the shortfall with the mental health facility, which, if we had that completed, would make our community a lot safer, because of a lot of visible suffering by mentally unwell people in our community right now. That can't go addressed. But instead, I guess it's easier to invest in infrastructure to catch them than to save them. So one day, that day will come. I believe in us, and I believe in the university, because there's a lot of great people that work there that know what's up.
All right. All right. Thanks, everyone. Also appreciate this partnership, you know, much as I appreciate those folks who are faculty members doing good outreach work in the community, those public service folks who are helming summer camps and the like that are just wrapping right now, and the students who we know are contributing positively. Certainly, when I was in the classroom, we're always stalwarts and showing up week in, week out, and helping my own students. So I know this is just one of many, but looking forward to those next ones. Motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, nope.
You read it already.
Yeah, okay.
No.
All right. Please note, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Parker said no. All right. We have new business items to consider under suspension of rules. Can I hear a motion for suspension of rules?
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 24 is just correcting a Scrivener's error, just meaning a--
Second.
Error, and so Attorney Drake needs to read the ordinance.
Okay.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to schedule fees to be adopted annually and for other purposes. And this relates to the Park Program. We know to clear clear.
All right. So had a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. Any input on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. 25 is a resolution authorizing settlement. Staff, entertain a motion regarding this.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. Input on this item? Mr. Hamby? Mr. Edwards?
Looks good. Ready to go.
Mr. Hul?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. This is a resolution to settle an incident where we had a Clark County police officer collide with a resident. And what vehicle was the Clark County police officer driving, do we know?
I do not know that. I could find that out, send that out in the morning. I don't know the exact type of vehicle.
Do we know if it was a car, for example, or an SUV or a truck?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Well, I would point out, we go through these quite a bit. We don't usually spend much time discussing them. But we're often paying a lot of money in addition to the human toll that people experience when they're in an incident. And these things happen. Mistakes happen, you know? People who work in public safety are rushing to get to an emergency, and mistakes happen. But if that mistake happens in an SUV rather than a car, it's much more likely to result in someone dying. And maybe that's, you know, maybe people like that, because you're actually less likely to spend as much money settling with the family of a deceased person than you are settling with the affairs of a living person in many cases. I'm not sure. But I do think we need to take seriously, as these things keep coming before us, that we are investing in infrastructure that is literally unsafe.
Mayor, may I say something? I don't necessarily think we make, just need to make the assumption that it was an SUV or what type of accident it was or anything of that sort. I do know there was an incident, I think it was this week or last week, where a police officer was in a car, a regular car, a regular police car, was rear-ended by a drunk driver, I believe, and suffered some injuries as a result of that. So the vote is to do a resolution from an accident. And I think that that's what's on the floor, and we can address these other things at another time.
And I'll say broadly, we know we want to mitigate risk, and of course, things like our Vision Zero program are all about that. So I appreciate everything that all of us do to ensure that we have as few dangerous incidents for our staff and for the public broadly as possible. Any further input on this item? All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving on to item 26. This is a 33rd declaration of a local state of emergency related to COVID-19, and this replicates the language that was in the last state of emergency.
I'll move to approve. I just want to make sure that the language retaining the West Washington Street retail area is in this.
And the attorney is indicating it is.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Edwards, any follow-up?
Nope.
Any further input from the body?
Please read the ordinance.
All right. Ordinance from Attorney Drake?
An ordinance for the 33rd Declaration of a Local State of Emergency related to COVID-19 and for other purposes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item 27. There's a nominating report that I've generated with the assistance of the clerk that is in front of you, and this is appointments to various boards, authorities, and commissions. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And I will read those names. All right. So these are some reappointments, some new appointments for the Athens Downtown Development Authority, reappointment of Drew Dekel and reappointment of Jason Leonard, both for two-year terms. For the Athens in Motion Commission, five-point terms all for John Devine, Teresa Friedlander, and Randy Halsted. For the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Region Two Advisory Council, a three-year term for James Alexander. For the Division of Family and Children's Services Committee, a five-year term for Asia Thomas. For the Georgia Innovation Corps or Joint Development Authority, Susan Bogartis is reappointed to a four-year term. For the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, a new body, three-year terms for Michael Bruger, Heidi Davison, Matt Napolma, and four-year terms for Jared Harper, Taylor Madeline Myers, Starry Knowles, and Suzie Knowles. And then for the Vision Committee, three-year terms for Allison Alwes, Paul Bumbulian, Cole Napper, and Matthew Pulver. So thank you, everybody who applied, and particularly for those folks for volunteering and for good work in this community. All right. Last item is an extension of a storage agreement at the Taylor Grady House. And so this will allow, through this RFP period that we have underway, for the furniture to remain in place for potential future utilization. Got a, who made the motion up?
He made it.
Hamby made the motion. Edwards had the second.
No, thanks for doing this.
Yes. Thanks to staff. They've been on the case. I appreciate it very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are moving on to input on planning and zoning items, which we will receive individually. And in every planning and zoning item, we have the opportunity for three-minute input, and people also have the opportunity to sign up in advance for a 10-minute segment. Madam Clerk, for item 28, has anyone signed up in advance?
No, not yet.
All right. So item 28 regards 505 and 515 Olympic Drive. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? All right. I see none. And so I know, Commissioner Parker, you wanted to entertain a one-cycle extension of this. That's still the case?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to table. We're still in discussions with the developer about a potential payment in lieu structure based on our inclusionary zoning ordinance. about a potential payment in lieu structure based on our inclusionary zoning ordinance. I did want to ask one quick question to staff, perhaps you can just follow up with me via email if it's helpful, but with regards to our Affordable Housing Fund, my understanding is that the internal infrastructure for that has not yet been set up for like our inclusionary zoning program? Right, right, okay. And so that would probably not actually be a viable avenue for pursuing that with this particular project, given we pretty much have a month to figure that out.
I believe so, Commissioner Parker.
Actually, I think it would be a good opportunity for the consultant to give us some feedback on how we might want to shape the Affordable Housing Fund and the policies around that.
Okay. But as we have previously with things like when we've partnered with housing nonprofits to take on some affordable housing work as a condition of certain plan development approvals, could a similar thing be done here with a payment in lieu to a community development organization instead of directly to that unified government?
Well, I think we have to be aware, it's very important, you know, that the developer approached us actually with the offer to do that, and that we're being careful not to make the condition of approval of the zoning because that can get into an issue of where you're talking about what's called contract zoning. You know, for example, the Lexington Road Project, when they approached staff with that plan, they offered to put the affordable housing versus where we go out to the developer and say, we'll approve this if you agree to do that, that might create potential problems. And I think that's why the mayor has had the committee working to try and codify what we do so we don't get into that situation. So that's, I think, what we need to be aware of, the concern there.
No, I agree.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all.
All right, had a motion from Commissioner Parker, is there a second for the hold?
Oh, I'll second.
All right, a second from Commissioner Thornton.
Mr. Mayor, there's a amendment to the future land use map as well as, oh, we're continuing this, I'm sorry.
Hold it all as a single vote, okay, that's helpful.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Thornton?
I just wanted to ask Commissioner Parker, have you been in touch with or has Ms. Taylor gotten in touch with you?
I saw her at a community meeting last week, but we haven't spoken since then.
I'm gonna text you her number.
Okay.
And that's who's been texting me with a group of folk.
Okay.
So I'll text you her number.
Great.
All right, motion to hold and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will see this again next month. All right, item 29 regards 100, 106, 179, and 185 Timothy Park Lane, and I believe we've got Justin Crichton, who signed up for the 10-minute input, so welcome to the podium.
I will be as brief as I possibly can, but I do want to point out a couple of things about this application. I am Justin Crichton, I'm a senior planner with WNNA Engineering. Our offices are located at 355 Anita Street. This request before you is to amend the existing plan development for the village at Timothy Park, and it seeks to accomplish two separate things. The first is to reestablish the two separate, as two separate lots, the tax parcels at 100 and 106 Timothy Park. The previous approved plan had it combined into one, into a single lot that was based on the request from a potential buyer who wanted to put a very large home on there. Then that never came to fruition, so the applicant is requesting to be able to separate those two tax parcels into two buildable lots. The second would remove the amenity lot designation for the parcels located at 179 and 185. Right now, the existing PD has that shown as a lot with a swimming pool and a clubhouse. This proposal seeks to separate that lot or re-separate that lot into a community green space with a little park, and then the lot at 179 become a building lot. It's essentially the same PD that was approved or takes it back to a previous version of this PD. We hope that you can see fit to agree with staff's recommendation as well as the planning commission's of approval. And just wrapping this up, I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has, but thank you for the favorable consideration this evening.
Thank you, Justin. Is there any other public input on this item, number 29? All right, hearing none, this is in Commissioner Hamby's district.
Thank you, Justin, for that explanation. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Thornton. Any further input, Commissioner Hamby?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Thornton?
No, sir.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, ordinance, thank you Attorney Drake.
Ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending a plan development comprising approximately 15.13 acres and located at 100, 106, 179, and 185 Timothy Park Lane in the CNPD Commercial Neighborhood Plan Development and for other purposes.
All right, so just to affirm, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, item 13 regards 42.95 acres at the 1,000 block of Hull Road. Anyone here to speak to this item? All right, this is in District Nine. Commissioner Thornton, the floor is yours, and we have to take two votes, future land use and then the rezoning.
So it'd be two votes, two separate votes.
So the first motion will be regarding the future land use.
I actually thank you, Brad, for meeting me out there today to make sure I had a good visual. I definitely think that there's great possibility, and I would like to make a motion for the future land use.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Hamby, the future land use. Any further input from the body? Amendment or ordinance, thank you.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future land use map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation on approximately 42.95 acres located at the 1,000 block of Hull Road from general business and rule to mixed density residential and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now we need a motion for approval of the rezoning.
Again, I'm really excited about the possibilities for that area. We talked last month about how that 129 corridor is growing. When Commissioner Davenport asked about the school next door, I couldn't visualize it, but I, again, Brad took me out there today. I think that it's going to have a numerous impact economically, housing in that end of going down 72, probably crossing over to Danielsville Highway. So there's a lot of potential on that thoroughway. Did I say that right, Brad?
It's right.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion for the rezoning.
Second.
All right, and is there an ordinance with the rezoning as well?
Yes. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning one parcel of land comprising approximately 42.95 acres located at 1,000 block of Hull Road from CR Commercial Rule to RM1 Mixed Density Residential and for other purposes.
All right, thank you, Attorney Drake. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to item 31, and this involves 16.17 acres at 2325 Commerce Road. Is any member of the public here to speak to this? All right, hearing the crickets, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Denson, this is in your district.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I spoke with Mr. Shields, the applicant, and my understanding is that he wants this item, this rezon request, to be pulled, correct?
And I was hoping you were gonna raise it, because I spoke to him as well and never received anything officially from him, so I was hoping that you had...
I did officially, he told me that you did receive something officially, but I did speak with him, yeah, and I'm not sure if he has, did he have to file anything?
I mean, technically, you could, if he talked to you and asked you that, you could just request...
Okay, yeah, I did speak to him. So I guess I make a motion that we will be the official, that we pull this request.
Just be a request to accept the applicant's withdrawal of this item.
That, yeah, accept the withdrawal of this item.
Second. I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, a second from Commissioner Hamby to accept the withdrawal of this item. Any further input? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the item stands as withdrawn. All right, item 32 is the parking lot at 229 Megs Street. Is any member of the public here to speak to this item? Evening.
Hi, I'm Chris Evans at 155 Edward Circle, and just to hear, just speak in favor of it, and just make sure we're just looking at it as a special use project. I can run through the whole project, or I can answer any questions you may have about it.
Thanks for being here for us.
Yes.
Appreciate it. All right, this is in Commissioner Link's district.
Yeah, I'll move to approve. I have a few things to say.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Edwards. Go right ahead, Commissioner Link.
Yeah, this is a commercially downtown-zoned piece of property. It's a parking lot, it's ripe for redevelopment, it's adjacent to the Bala Works, adjacent to the back end of the Baptist Church, it's tucked back behind the Big Hill where the historic Kamic House property is. It's not really adjacent to any single-family neighborhood-style property at all. I know there are some misgivings among some in the neighborhood who are offered by, you know, what's essentially a mid-rise apartment building. As best I can tell, this building is not designed intended for student housing. It's primarily two-bedroom apartments. It's adjacent to the Bala Works, which is condos. I don't know if this is gonna be condo or rental. I'm really happy with the design of it. I like the fact that they've completely obscured the parking deck, yet they've still accommodated all the necessary parking for the residents as well as the businesses in the Bala Works. And there'll be some on-street parking spaces and some street trees and things like that. And it's a design that we don't typically see of these kind of mid-rise apartment buildings. It looks really incremental. It looks like something that kind of popped up over decades rather than a giant block flopped on a giant block. So, you know, I know there are some that would probably like to see some cute little three-story garden apartment building, but in this location, that's just not feasible or pragmatic, and I'll be voting to support this.
Thanks, Commissioner Link. Any follow-up, Commissioner Edwards?
No.
This is a project I support, you know, turning car storage into living space where people can actually have a dwelling. Makes perfect sense to me, Mayor.
Commissioner Thornton?
As I said at the last work session, I think this is so, it's old, but it's new. It's old in other places, but it's new here in Athens. I think it will help change, not change, because people don't like change, but I think it will add to the diversity, the look of downtown. So I will support this.
It's like something you could have walked past in Philadelphia, isn't it?
Yeah, it's right there, sit on the steps.
Commissioner Myers?
I am going to support this, but I would like to just make a couple of comments, maybe that they'll seep in as the design goes further along. Someone, a couple of people communicated again about the parking deck, which is way, I'm trying to get my directions right here, but on the west side, but up on the west side, and to the Kamic House, is it pronounced right? That's just been purchased. And I would sure love to see somehow that that was, that seems to be hidden away, but that there would be some sort of decorative element there, something to make it more attractive with that historical building that's in there in place. And the other thing, and, you know, anyone who likes, wants to give me a little more, I don't know, advice on these three, four bedrooms with four baths and how those are not for students, I mean, if you add up the bedrooms, it adds to quite a few. And I was looking at those designs really carefully, and I was thinking myself that they really are made for students, because if it was made for me, there'd be a master bedroom that was bigger than the other two bedrooms, and all the bedrooms in the three and four bedrooms are exactly the same size. And so if they were gonna attract people who were not students, it seems like the design would be a little bit different on those. But, you know, the outsides, I like the outside, I'm just concerned about there being housing for people who are not students as well as students, or mixed housing.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Edwards, we've got an ordinance.
Ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval in the CWW E Commercial Downtown West End Downtown Design Area District on the approximate 1.2-acre parcel of land located at 229 Megs Street and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. Megs.
Megs, sorry.
Good gosh.
I'm learning.
One street at a time. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's all right, there was a former leisure services director who called the avenue extending from the loop north from Oglethorpe, Telasse Road, after being here for five years, so we're gonna give you some grace. It's all right. All right, item 33 is involving 347 West Hancock Avenue, and we do have David Matheny and Chad Brown who've registered to share the 10-minute segment.
We got this, come on, we got this, let's go. We're almost there. We're almost there.
No worries.
We can do it. Five hours, we waited for like two hours, let's get them out.
We feel you. All right, David and Chad, come on down.
We are ready for you.
Okay, well, I gotta hurry, this is past my bedtime. So I just wanted to say that it's disconcerting that the neighboring residents to 347 West Hancock are in opposition to a fraternity. And even though it's in a commercial downtown zone, I think it's very unfortunate that a group of young men representing the current membership of Phi Capita fraternity are being denied an opportunity to have a presence in Athens for Fall Rush due to what seems to be a negative reaction to another fraternity that's located directly in residential area. As you know, Phi Tau sold their house to a developer and are in the process of looking for a permanent home, but until that can be accomplished, they want and need a temporary location that they can't, that they had found, they thought they had found the perfect situation by working out a one-year lease for a Greek Revival House downtown. The house at 347 West Hancock is slated to be an Airbnb, but because of the time constraints, the owner of the house was unable to get the Airbnb completed in time for a full, for a fall occupancy. And so they were presented with the opportunity to lease the house for one year while they moved ahead with their plans to start construction on a new addition behind the existing historic house. Of course, there are some hurdles for fraternity ones to seek a special use and twos to secure proper parking. And as you know, we're bringing to you a recommendation of approval for a special use permit from the Planning Commission with the condition that the special use permit expire after one year. This should alleviate any concerns that this is a ruse for the fraternity to move in and then stay permanently. This property is not suitable for a long-term or permanent location, and to reiterate, the property owners are committed to carrying out their plans for an Airbnb. The fraternity has also secured a 25-space parking lot in the downtown area that will satisfy all the parking requirements and should alleviate concerns of parking in residential areas. If the concern is chapter nine, there is a huge parking lot at First Baptist Church right across the street that I believe could be worked out. While Phi Tau understands the concerns of nearby residents and also understands that there has been an adversarial relationship with Kappa Alpha fraternity, what they don't understand is why the residents are taking a hard stance against them moving into a downtown location that is surrounded on two sides by SAE fraternity and on the other side by an office building. And then there being a buffer of an entire block of apartments, parking lots, a church, retail centers and restaurants, et cetera. It is not the intentions of Phi Tau to take up a permanent residency in a single-family neighborhood. And frankly, I don't have a good answer, rational answer for these young men and their alumni and Housing Corporation Board. I don't think there's anyone in this room that would argue that fraternities and sororities have long and meaningful history as part of Georgia's flagship university and the Athens community. Nor would anyone in this room think that any fraternity or sorority should be denied a presence in our community. So it begs the question, what are the overriding issues that need to be addressed so that this particular fraternity can be granted a presence for one year, actually 10 months, in this particular location and not offend anyone? This can be resolved, I know it can. Whether there are further conditions placed on the special use, such as no outdoor banned parties that don't meet ACC guidelines, or no parking west of Finley Street, I don't know. But this... But this needs to be a vote from the commissioners based on rational and factual information and not on emotions of past bad experiences. You may well hear from nearby residents that their concerns are noise, trash, unruly behavior, and cars parking all over the neighborhood. Yet somehow, the Greek community has found a way to coexist in other neighborhoods, and I don't see why this can't be figured out for a neighboring downtown area. So with all this in mind, I'd very much like to have an opportunity to meet with neighboring residents to discuss how Phi Capita could be allowed to use this house on a temporary basis and be a good neighbor. Therefore, I'm requesting that the commissioners put a 40-day hold on a vote of this special use permit, allowing us to meet and have meaningful dialogue about any fears and misgivings the neighborhood may have and how to resolve them. I relinquish my remaining time to co-applicant Chad Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. My wife, Lauren, and I are owners of 347 West Hancock, and we are extremely excited to bring an Airbnb and guesthouse-type experience downtown. Due to supply chain and construction challenges, getting it in place by this fall became impossible. So about a month into our process with HBC, the fraternity showed up, said, "We need a place to recruit members. We would like to do a 10-month lease and pay you a lot of money to do that, and you guys can still do construction on the back of the property to get ready for 2023." Honestly, first approach, my wife said, "No way." This is a dream of my life, she loves historic properties. We've been in Athens 24 years, we own other property here. But as we got to know the fraternity guys and the alumni and their commitment to really taking care of the house and making sure that they were going to leave it better than they found it, and allow us to have more money to provide a better product downtown and for a guest experience a year from now, it became a win for us and a win for the fraternity and what we feel like is a win for the community. So I would just ask you to consider the facts of this is a 10-month lease, we are moving forward with our process, we bought wall decor, we bought beds, we've been to Airbnb conferences, we own a historic house in Charleston that we do this with. We're very, very passionate about providing an awesome experience for people visiting Athens and being downtown in a historic environment. And the fraternity being there just helps us fund the project and the time we need to make it better and have something really awesome for Athens in 2023. So I would really appreciate any consideration and time you could give us for another 40 days to discuss with the community and the neighbors and just help them understand this isn't some ruse where they're buying the house, because I can promise you and give you my word, we're not selling it, and that's not our intention here. So thank you all very much for all you do, and I'm always happy to answer any questions I can.
Thank you, Mr. Brown and Mr. Matheny. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item for three minutes? Just give us your name for the record, and then you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, yes. My name is Jacques Lee, and I live at 480 South Millage Avenue, Apartment D1. I didn't write anything down, I just wanted to give you guys a face to relate to the fraternity. I'm Jacques Lee, I'm from Augusta, Georgia. I'm going into my senior year at the University of Georgia studying computer science. Thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to speak, and on behalf of my fraternity, I just wanted you guys to know that being a part of Phi Tau is a lot more than just departing. There's a lot more going on in the community philanthropy-wise, just giving back, as well as fellowship and brotherhood. So, yeah, we do a lot more stuff in the community than just like throwing on parties and like making a whole bunch of noise and throwing trash on the street. From my personal experience being in the fraternity, we've done street cleanups on Strickland Avenue twice a year. We gather up volunteers in our fraternity, go take care of those kinds of things. We collect canned goods and non-perishables to give to the, to give to the community as well, even having rewards and stuff like that for brothers who bring in the most stuff. Honestly, guys, I just wanted to tell you that we really just need a place for the year to recuperate. We haven't had a house in six months, and, you know, we're willing to honor the integrity of the community if we get the chance to move in. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacques. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Mayor Commissioners, Allen Cleveland, live at 420 West Lake. We're happy to be here to kind of share some information. There's a lot of misinformation that's been presented to you, and we'd like to get an opportunity with this hold to clarify some of that. I want to tell you a little bit about the fraternity. Our benefit, the benefit that the fraternity has to the community is significant and it's important. It's not just these 70 young men in college, it's 1,000 alumni who have been coming through here since 1950. And of those 1,000 alumni, there's about 20 in Athens like me who own a business, who own property, who pay employees, who pay taxes, who donate their time to nonprofits and their money, and that's a significant amount. Some of these guys pay several hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes. I did some math, just in the last 10 years, these guys in Athens have donated almost a million dollars to local nonprofits. So the idea that there's no benefit of our fraternity to the community is just, it's just wrong. There's a lot of benefit that we provide. The West End District, facts, there's been fraternities in West End District for over 100 years. It's becoming, it has been and is becoming a student section of downtown. There's almost three blocks of student residency being built or there now. There's, the only retail really is the Bottle Works. It's surrounded to the east by bars and band, you know, live music venues, and there's churches and parking lots, and that's it. That's downtown. To the west is mostly rental property. I looked up some of the, most of the property owners at the tax assessor's office and saw what, who owned what along Ree Street and North Church and that area. It's mostly owned by investment companies and LLCs. It's rental property. I don't know that it's all student rental, but it's certainly a lot of rental property there. The, we're hoping to get an opportunity to talk more about how the fraternity deals with issues, you know. I can tell you that in the time that we were at 558 West Broad, which was 10 years in the West End District, we never had a single trash complaint. Not one. You can check that with the Athens PD. Not a single one. We were on a busy, the busiest street in town, most prominent fraternity with a yard that's 20 feet from the road, and it was important to us that we not be that poster child for the Greek system. And so the guys policies to clean up. They clean up after parties. Parking, heard a lot about that. I'll just say, we put nine members to live in the house for this time period, we're going to have two. Most of the guys already had leases signed. So we've got 25 spaces leased at almost triple the rate, because we felt it was important that we have space for the guys that don't live downtown. About a third of the chapter lives within walking distance.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does anyone else like to speak to this item?
If I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. I'm Kevin Pulston. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors of Georgia Phi Capita Incorporated, the nonprofit corporation that has managed the housing affairs for the Beta Z Chapter of Phi Capita since 1950. I personally have been involved with the chapter for 42 of the 72, of those 72 years. I just wanted to clarify some rumors that are flying around. We've seen and writing, we've heard that we somehow were involved in the purchase of the property with, by Chad and his partners. And I'm the Secretary of the Board, so I'm responsible for meetings and records and transaction support and execution of transactions. And I can assure you, we had nothing to do with the acquisition of that property. We've been looking since late last year as the sale of 558 West Broad approached. We've been looking at various properties, five or six target properties in the Athens area. By April, none of those had come to fruition. We had a meeting in early May, May 9th, a meeting of the board. We started recalibrating, okay, what do we do for next year? How do we get this academic year taken care of? This house wasn't even on the board agenda for May 9th. Three or four days later, it came to our attention. We immediately approached Chad. I was directly involved in the negotiation of the lease with Chad. I was directly involved in the negotiation of the parking lot after we got the feedback from the planning staff that we needed a parking, X number of parking spaces. So we've just been proceeding as quickly as we can to play within the rules that the city has laid out of where fraternities can go, what the process is for the special use, what conditions we need to meet. We're not anarchists, we're not rule breakers, we're not going to, if there are conditions of the ordinance, we're not, we're not going to ignore those conditions. We've been around a long time. We know we're going to be here again next year when our next iteration of housing presents itself. We're trying to find a long-term alternative. As you all know, over the last 10 years, those options have gotten narrower and narrower for our Greek organizations, so we're going to try to find that option and come back to this board with a more permanent opportunity. I'm assuming after the first of the year, but we're really here for these young men to find them a place for this academic year. That's really all we're trying to do. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anyone else here speak to this item? All right, thank you for that input. Commissioner Link, I know there's been a request for a hold on this, I'd entertain a motion at this point.
Yes, I'll move to hold.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Link, second from Commissioner Parker to hold for a cycle. Any further input at this point? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. It is now that time in the evening when we take resident input on any item that is, has not been on our agenda.
Do we not need to consider the Taylor Grady House Agreement under suspension of rules?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we did that, we did.
Oh, we did, well, it's at the end of the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did that before planning and zoning, sorry. Yeah, so we're good there. All right, if anybody's here to speak to any item not on our agenda, now is that time. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Emily Thompson. I am the president of our Professional Firefighters of Athens, Clark County, Local 2795. And also on behalf of the members, I would like to thank all of you for the service to this community. I'm here today to tell you a little bit about who we are, what we do, and ask you to address a serious concern held by our firefighters. First, our values as an organization are simple: provide excellent service delivery, give back to the community in which we serve, take care of our firefighters and their families. We have a long history of community engagement through our affiliation as local chapter of the International Association of Firefighters, the IFF. In the past, we have engaged in community-based projects like donations to the Lawrence Smith Center for Cancer Support and Toys for Tots. Serving our community is fundamental to who we are as an organization. We also have worked hard to support firefighters and their families when they fall in hard times. For example, in 2018, we worked with several community employees within and outside the fire department to raise one of our members who was battling terminal cancer collectively in an effort, and we raised $16,000 to offset cost of medical expenses. On several occasions, we've demonstrated we are responsible community partners. However, despite this, there has been a barrier placed between the Professional Firefighters of Athens, Clark County, Local 2795, and our fire department administration. In 2007, a former county manager directed fire administration to cease communications with our organization. Since that time, we've been unable to formally meet with fire administration to discuss issues important to firefighters. Firefighter associations all over the state have the ability to meet with management, discuss issues, and provide resources. Some of those departments include Cherokee County, DeKalb County, East Point, Atlanta, South Fulton, Savannah, and others. There's an entire network of free, grant-funded, and low-cost resources we are letting slip right through our fingers because of a former county manager directed fire administration to cease communication with us. These resources we can bring to the table can help recruit and retain talented and diverse firefighters, improve department morale, and enhance the service we provide to Athens, Clark County residents and visitors. We ask you to help our members have a voice and bring resources to our county by removing this communication barrier between the Professional Firefighters of Athens, Clark County and ACC Administration Management. Give us the ability to meet on a regular basis with our employer. The Professional Firefighters of Athens, Clark County, Local 2795 will continue to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Further input on any item not on the agenda?
Hello again, Wes Thompson. I'm the Vice President of the Athens, Clark County Professional Firefighters, and great strides have been made in the last two months of working with you guys to get to this point. And, you know, we would really like to see you pass a resolution recognizing us. I know there's some members of this body who would greatly like to see labor presented and present here, and that's what we're here for, you know. You've seen me around, and I plan on being here more and more. We thank you for everything you do and all of your service, and we want to work with you guys to better our fire department, take care of our firemen, and also provide the citizens with the services that they deserve, that they expect, you know, from their tax dollar. We thank you, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Probably got a red mark on my nose from that mask. My name is Jeremy Rogers. I've been a member of Athens, Clark County Fire Department for 15 years, and a member of Local 2795 for about 14 and a half, probably. I joined shortly, shortly after joining this department. The goal of a firefighter is to serve their community in any capacity that they can. We don't just fight fires, we go to automobile accidents, we go to hazmat incidents. We respond with police. We have people that are angry at us, we have people that throw rocks at us, we have people that don't want our help but need our help, and we're there to serve them. And our goal as a firefighter's union is to make sure that we can serve not only our members, but that we can, again, bring more resources, as our president stated, to this community, to our department, to do our job better. And it would be a great help if we had the ability to talk with our administration formally as well as you guys to come up with solutions. As I'm sure you all are well aware, public safety is bleeding right now, and we are not exempt from that. We want to help fix this problem. We want to help fix the problem of losing good, seasoned members, and we want to help our members of the department as well as members of the community. We want to be engaged, but in order to do that, we have to be able to communicate formally with you guys and with our administration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeremy. Does anyone else here tonight who'd like to speak to any item not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, want to see if there's any input from manager tonight? Anything from the attorney tonight?
The organization has these for everyone to pick.
Perfect, we'll get those. Thank you, thanks for bringing those. All right, and we're going to go around in just a second. I have just two things. First is an amended assignment to the Legislative Review Committee, and this is to extend the work that they began regarding our gas-powered tools and move to investigate the noise ordinance, specifically machines, vehicles, and amplified noises as an expanded piece of that assignment. And the second thing is a proclamation. I appreciate Commissioner Davenport not bringing this opportunity forward. forward to declare August as Black Business Month. And so I'll read just a component of this. Whereas black business owners account for 10% of the United States businesses and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses, and whereas nearly 40% of black-owned businesses are in healthcare, social services, repair, maintenance, laundry services, advertising firms, auto dealerships, consulting services, restaurants, barber shops, beauty salons, and more, and whereas August is National Black Business Month, and black-owned businesses are recognized across the country and in Athens Clark County, now therefore I, Kelly Gertz, Mayor of the Unified Government, do hereby proclaim August 2022 as Black Business Month. So thank you for assisting with that, Mr. Davenport. Appreciate that very much. And with that, Commissioner Davenport, I'm going to begin with you. We'll do round robin, ending with Commissioner Hamby. Always last.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Very briefly, I want to thank the members of the IFF for coming out. As a fellow member of AFL-CIO, Affiliated Union, I would definitely be interested in working with others to draft a resolution in support and recognition of their union. I also want to say that I would very much like to see some progress with the Land Bank Authority. I'm getting an increasing number of calls and emails regarding nuisance properties in the district that are very, very difficult to resolve. I've spent several weeks just personally chasing down who owns this one house. And so it would be great to be able to point people towards a solution on the horizon for that issue, particularly as we struggle to address issues of affordable housing as well. So Land Bank Authority, let's get that popping. Last thing, I would also love us to, in the coming months, to get to work on the T-Sploß tiering. I almost brought these comments up when we were talking about Vision Zero earlier, but, you know, I brought it back around right here, in that we have a lot of people in my district and countywide, I imagine, who are really struggling to get the traffic calming measures that they need because they don't meet certain metrics, or because there hasn't been like a fatal crash in some places. And so we're like, kind of waiting to get proof that some place is dangerous, which is not a proactive approach we'd like to see. As well, there's increasing evidence that traffic calming measures can also improve public safety in other ways. For example, stopping shootings by preventing ease of entrance and getaway from areas like Nellie B. And so with all of these issues, I just think that making use of funds already available in T-Sploß is really important. So let's get on that as soon as we can. Thank you.
Yeah, I also am very interested in working on a resolution to recognize the firefighters' union. I think it's really important that we are open to organized labor, and I think it would make for a better accounting government. And the role our firefighters play in the public safety of the community is extremely important, and it's important that we have happy firefighters and that their needs are being addressed and they're able to offer input on policy. I also want to say that we've accomplished some really important stuff tonight. And it's important stuff that kind of lays the groundwork for actual policy. But it will be up to a commission that looks very, very different from this one to actually implement that policy, to actually implement policies that follow through with our Vision Zero approach, and policies that follow through with our Clean and Renewable Energy Plan, policies that follow through with recommendations from that Affordable Housing Initiative. You know, we, these are, these are just, you know, clouds in the sky if there's not a real commitment to actually implementing the policies that come out of these. So I just want to give some word out to those who are still going to be here come January to please honor these commitments, work with your new colleagues, to explain to them why these are important and why this body committed to them, and don't make me come to the podium.
All right. Yeah, I'll lead off with also being in support and definitely appreciating our firefighters and union members for coming and speaking with us tonight. I also want to say I appreciate the firefighters for coming to my house last month to help make sure my house was safe after my crawl space caught on fire. And the, our amazing firefighters stayed in my house until they knew exactly where it came from. They knew that we were safe staying in that house before they left. And they do amazing work. And I agree, labor unions help create better workers, better working situations, better communities. And so I think I completely support a resolution that would be recognizing them. And honestly, I would say I support us writing a resolution, creating a policy that ACC GOV recognizes and engages in good faith with unions and labor organizations in general. And so I'd love to see that be a part of it, too. Continuing on, I also want to thank central services staff for very quickly jumping on cutting down some high weeds and grass around Newton Bridge and Vincent Drive transit stops. They got to it the very next day, and I had a curve for some transit riders that they very much appreciated it. And then my last thank you is for the Keep Athens Clark County Beautiful. They just finished up their litter index. Me and my family went off and did one of the things. It was fun. I know dozens of other people in the community did it also. And I just appreciate them organizing that and kind of taking a scientific data kind of look at litter, where it comes from, and what we can be doing to alleviate it. That's all I got.
All right. Yeah, definitely with y'all and with the members of our local union in the fire department. Very interested in working on a resolution. I will follow up with y'all. If not later tonight, then tomorrow on that. And anyone else who's interested, I would love to move forward with the resolution, both recognizing the fire department union and also along the lines of what Commissioner Denson said, something that's pro-union generally. I'm also interested in us pursuing a resolution that addresses some of the policy questions that are still lingering regarding marijuana and hemp that we didn't quite get to today. I'm really proud of what we did today. A few calendar announcements and a couple of thoughts. Calendar announcements, I have a town hall. It's going to be on Thursday, August 18th at 7:00 PM in Fire Station Number Two off Cleveland Road. Going to be doing a community cleanup roadside litter situation on Monday, August 27th at 7:00 PM in Stonehenge, especially along Old Monroe Road, but hopefully other places as well if we get enough folks out. There's a Back to School Resource Fair being organized by our Neighborhood Leaders in District Six at 295 Tallahassee Road this Saturday, August 6th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. People can get some free school supplies there, so please turn out. And I will be announcing some open office hours that I plan to keep regularly at different places around the district and downtown. So if folks haven't signed up for my newsletter, please get on there. That's going to get kicked back into gear later this week with some open office hours. Two thoughts for colleagues I wanted to share. One is about Fowler Mill. We've had a bridge out there for over a year, and I'm really grateful for the work that's been done to try to move things along with GDOT, but it's moving very slowly. We were able to act very expeditiously with College Station. Obviously, that was different for a variety of reasons, larger road, water main break, et cetera. But I think we need to act with similar sense of urgency around Fowler Mill once we see what happens with this GDOT application. The folks who live on that road are not only severely inconvenienced, but sometimes put at risk when CSX parks on the tracks. And we have very limited authority, if any, over CSX. And so there's no expedient way for emergency vehicles to get to people's homes or for people to get out of their neighborhood when that's occurring. And the other thing I wanted to talk about is youth facilities on the west side. You know, I know we're moving forward with the Leader Services Master Plan, as is in our budget. I'm hoping that we can do something to explicitly address the lack of youth services, specifically on the west side. We need investment in the Atlanta Highway area. There's folks who live in Bogart Addresses and who feel extremely forgotten by this body and have for a long time. Stonehenge refers to itself as "the island" because they feel so isolated. And youth resources is the number one thing I hear from constituents in terms of what they need to see there. So I think there's some opportunities people are coming to us with. There was a packet, I believe, everyone received that was addressed to me at the top, but it was for all of us. So I think at some point you got that in your mail before we went on break. And that's one of many that I know people are looking at. But I think when we're talking about trying to do this in an equitable way and through a process, part of that, I think, is articulating a need specifically on the west side where there is a gap in those youth resources. And the last thing for anyone who's still watching this late is there is a revisiting of a large development in District Six that will be discussed by the Planning Commission again this Thursday on Classic Road. Thanks.
Thanks. I'm just still really friggin' ticked off about that mask that was thrown here earlier. And, you know, I, you know, I just can't abide people abusing the staff of this government, you know, throwing a used mask on the ground with the expectation that somebody else is going to pick it up that serves this government. And, you know, to me, it was just blatantly disrespectful. I mean, look at our code of ordinances. No person shall throw litter in any public place within Athens Clark County. And the penalty, Attorney Drake, the punishment imposed for any violation shall not exceed a fine of $500 or 60 days imprisonment, or both. The minimum fine which may be imposed shall not be less than $50 for a first offense. Look, I mean, we saw it right here in front of us. I mean, I give no quarter to sociopathic behavior like that in the cradle of the democracy of this county. So I would like to see it addressed next time that individual may come into this room. Thank you.
Thanks to Emily, Wes, and Jeremy and the firefighters' union for coming in this evening. I want to learn more. I want to do a big shout out to Bike Athens, who has gone all around town and fixed all the bike, public bike pubs. Especially appreciative of that because I tried to use one a couple of weeks ago over in Boulevard and ended up just making my tire totally flat. So that's great. I want to say a thank you to the summer programs that both Leisure Services and the ARPA-funded groups put on this summer. I've, you know, I've talked to a couple of different people lately who've just talked about how appreciative they are of the ARPA funds, of the Leisure Service programs, of the programs that are in the community centers. I also want to thank all those who have applied to be on our boards, authorities, and commissions. And I think we are moving a little closer to getting our boards more representative of the diversity of our community, but need to keep working on that. A lot of us, myself, are here because of the work I did on those boards that gave me the confidence to serve in office. And we did get a lot done tonight. We got a lot of really good stuff done, and I'm really proud to be part of that. And I also want to, you know, I want to thank our manager's office and the attorney's office and the clerk and all the staff who are behind the scenes getting, helping us get all that done. I mean, it's, it's a lot. But it's really wonderful to be part of so many exciting initiatives for our community. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got two brief things. One is, I mentioned in front of Earth Fair, the traffic signal. If, and I don't know what could be done to draw attention to that and the, and the others, others there in five points. There's people, I know there was a near miss a couple of weeks ago that, that if somebody, I think if somebody had seen the crosswalk or knew it was there and paid better attention. And something to help address, draw attention to that. But also, on the corner of Greenwood and Grand Island, there's, they're working on a neighborhood traffic calming program. The stop bar at the stop sign needs, needs replacing. A lot, evidently, a lot of folks are running that stop sign. And I think those stop bars, from what I understand, help and appreciate Tim Griffith's help in coming out to the folks, meeting with the folks at Grand Island. That's all. Motion to adjourn.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Everybody sleep well.